This presentation is on behalf of myself and my colleagues, Mark Mayer, Principal of Concord High School and Keith Roth, Principal of Brandywine High School. Over the past several months, we have begun planning and preparation for the upcoming class of 2021 commencement exercises. Our three high schools have been coordinating the plans for a graduation ceremony. We have secured light action production once again for staging, sound, and live broadcasting of the three graduations on June 6th at Brandywine High School in the Brandywine Stadium. Our focus will be on hosting three socially distant events with each graduate permitted to invite two guests to attend the ceremony. The proposals will be submitted to the Delaware Department of Public Health for approval based on graduations meeting the criteria outlined under the COVID-19 regulations for outdoor gatherings. It is our goal to have one graduation event for each of the high schools on the following dates presented. On June 6th, Concord High School will go first at 12:00 PM with our graduates arriving an hour prior to the graduation ceremony. Mount Pleasant High School will begin at 5:00 PM with graduates attending at 4:00 PM. And we will conclude the ceremonies with an 8:30 PM Brandywine High School graduation, and those graduates will be arriving at 7:30 PM. We've also made some plans in the event that we have implement weather. We have prepared potential rain dates as a plan to focus on holding still one graduation event for each of the high schools. With having Concord High School first on June 7th at 7:00 PM, Mount Pleasant High School on the 8th at 7:00 PM, and Brandywine High School on the 9th at 7:00 PM. All of this is depending on those approvals by the Delaware Department of Health stating that we may have one large event venue with our participants and guests attending that event. We've developed a contingency plan in the event that the Department of Health states that we're unable to have one large gathering. We've prepared to do as we did last summer with two graduation events for each of the high schools that have a larger capacity. We've planned to have Sunday Concord High School beginning the ceremonies at 12:00 PM and 5:00 PM. And then we will follow with Brandywine High School having the evening event at 8:30. Mount Pleasant would then follow up on the following Monday on June 7th. And due to school being in session, Mount Pleasant will begin their ceremonies, the first ceremony at 5:00 PM and the second ceremony at 8:30 PM. Again, this will be dependent on Delaware's Department of Health approving us to have two separate ceremonies because of the large sizes of Concord High School and Brandywine High School. We've also begun the planning of our special events and programs that are related to graduation and graduation ceremonies. So we've planned the discussion of our graduation parades for June 5th preceding our actual graduation day's events. Last year, we celebrated the class of 2020 with creative celebrations and recognition. And the class of 2021 will have the same opportunity to participate in prospective high school graduation parades. We are grateful to have our board member, Mrs. Kristen Pidgen, coordinating the events for each of the high schools, along with the support of high school parent groups. The parades will follow the traditional parade routes for each school and will be communicated to families as we get closer to the date and event. The high schools will coordinate a display of lawn signs again on the front lawns of each school for the day of each of the parades. We've begun the plans also for our prom events for our seniors. At this time, we are working closely with our student class councils and our council advisors to coordinate a prom event that meets the criteria again of the Delaware Department of Public Health. We are unsure if there'll be indoor or outdoor gatherings, but the plan is to select venues that allow for a large gathering meeting those criterias. Once we have secured the venues and the dates, we will communicate it out to the community as well. We will communicating forward those venues for each of the schools and making sure that we're not in conflict with the three high schools so that if we are allowed to have guests attending those events, that the participants have enough advance notice to meet again the Department of Health criteria. We understand that at this time, we are only allowing our seniors to participate in our prom events unless we're able to increase the size of participation again because our class sizes for graduation are pretty large. And then finally, the one.
I think I lost audio.
That we are still working with is our virtual celebrations as closer to April and May. Once we have secured those dates for those events, we will communicate that out to the community. And then we are working with all of our booster programs, sports boosters in particular, and also band boosters to determine if they're going to have permission to conduct any end-of-year banquets that we've had in the past. We did not have any last year, but it is our hope that we will be able to coordinate something for those organizations as well. As soon as we have more detailed information, we will provide information to the board and to our community. We thank you for the opportunity to present to you our plans moving forward, and we will continue to keep you informed as we progress.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, DPH will see way to allow us to have single ceremony.
I have a question. I might have missed it. Ms. Lacy, can you tell me who was a part of the committee that created this particular plan?
So a part of this plan was the secondary principals for high school along with our secondary director supervisor support of Yolanda McKinney, as well as assistance and support of our district supervisors.
Was there any opportunity presented to hear back from students themselves?
So at each of the high school levels, the principals have been in contact and coordination with the class council advisors and the class council members, which are the student members of the council. And then the class advisors have been in coordination with the process related to prom specifically, but not graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah, Mr. Skorba, I'd just like to comment and say thank you to all three principals for thorough planning and already having backup rain plans and backup plans in the event that DPH doesn't allow single ceremonies. That will take a lot of angst away from all the other pieces at the end of the year that you're trying to figure out and should provide a sense of relief to parents knowing that you've got plans in the works for every single angle that might come our way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tally Middle School Administrative Team to provide a glimpse behind the scenes. Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, Mr. Skorba, maybe I can give a little detail behind this. A week ago or so, we asked each of our building administrative teams to come to us at the district office and present on their data in terms of student enrollments, what it was looking like, possibilities for expansion, and to share what they're doing at the building level in terms of supporting students and families. And we asked one of those teams, Tally's team, to present tonight on just a few of the pieces that they're doing behind the scenes that most parents, most community members wouldn't realize are really going on.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Holler. I am Kenneth Rivera, the proud principal of the Tally Tigers. Tonight, we're going to highlight just a few supports that we're providing our hybrid and remote students by taking you through our systematic data-driven process used to identify students needing supports and then how we go about evaluating the effectiveness of these supports. The challenges of remote learning due to COVID has pushed us to look for different opportunities to achieve our goals of students developing both academically and socially. But let me start by introducing the amazing Tally Administrative Team. We have Assistant Principal Mr. Lawson, Dean of Students, Mr. Stevens, and now I'll hand it over to Assistant Principal Dr. Melinda Torte-Gleone, who will discuss a few building-wide supports that we have in place for all students.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Rivera. So when we discuss building-wide supports, that's our tier-one programming, our building-wide school climate and culture. We have spent several years at Tally developing a strong tier-one system, but we had to reimagine that because now with our current remote and hybrid needs, it needed to look different. Knowing that the teacher is the critical piece to student success, we began with the teacher training. The district provided extensive training for online learning strategies at the beginning of the year, and we continued and built on that. Even beginning last March, we began to create our own Tally professional development series that was intentionally designed and sequenced based on what we knew about our students and our teachers. We began with platforms for engagement because that's a key piece, so looking at Paradox, Flipgrid, all of the technology pieces, but with the twist of making sure that students are engaged and there are relationship-building strategies built in. We used video series to actually see strategies in action that we could then discuss as a team. So we looked at using positive framing to encourage strong engagement, greeting students with excitement and by name as they come into the classroom, normalizing the engagement by narrating what you see so students feel like that's what they should be doing. Cameras on was an issue because how can you connect if you can't see someone's face? So figuring out different strategies to encourage camera on so that we could have a purpose and build that human connection. And using the chat very specifically to not only check for understanding, but build excitement and look for those student answers as they're coming in. We also focused very heavily on writing-based strategies because we know that those writing-based strategies will help increase the engagement in a very supported way. And we did all of this intentionally with our students and teachers in mind. Our advisory program that we had built over the past four years also needed to be updated for our current needs. So we looked at our topics and made sure that they met our current student needs and then also how we were rolling it out. So using our morning meeting time and then also making sure it fit in during our SEO. Another piece is making sure that we are addressing the isolation. So we wanted to provide plenty of opportunities for students to socialize. So morning meetings, lunch bunches, check-ins, having a variety of clubs available and making sure all of this was available daily to our students. And then the last piece of our tier-one system is our recognition system. So what you always do with tier-one is teach the behaviors that you want to see, the positive behaviors, and then recognize them when you're seeing them. So our awards were updated with the current topics available. Our positive phone calls and messages focused on overcoming the barriers that we know our students are facing right now. And for our recognition system, we updated to a digital version for PBIS where students can collect their points and then go to our newly created school store if they are hybrid or use that online if they are currently still remote. And then the last step is to evaluate and make sure all of that is working. So then we have to look at our data. And to do that, I will hand it off to Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Dr. T. So the next step in supporting the whole child is to take a deeper look into data. This is where our problem-solving team comes into play. Our problem-solving team provides tier-two supports for targeted students. Our team consists of counselors, admins, secretaries, behavior health therapists, school nurse, and other strategic school personnel. We analyze data to address deficits regarding academics, attendance, engagement, as well as social, emotional well-being. And these are our hardest-hit areas at our school based on all our own personal data. And so if you take a look at the continuum on your screen, you'll see sort of our process where we identify the needs. We provide supports and interventions, and then most importantly, we monitor and adjust as needed. And at the center of it is all data. Everything is data-driven. And Mr. Lawson is going to give us some more specific examples of how we utilize data to provide interventions and other supports.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. In January, we began to welcome back students to our two-day hybrid program. With the help of our Tally support team, we began to not only plan the two-day program, but also look ahead at how we can bring our highest-need students into the building four days a week. Last month, Superintendent Holler made a comment regarding schools' ability to bring back students for four days if both appropriate and safe. That was all we needed to hear at Tally to put our plan into motion. Alongside our Special Education Coordinator, Dr. Amy Elliott, and our Special Education Chair, Ms. Brittany Corrigan, we dug into the data to determine what students needed in-person services the most. The return plan for our highest-need students has been divided into three separate phases. So as you can see, Phase 1 was implemented on March 8th, which was last Monday, and we focus on two subgroups. The first subgroup was our remote students with three or more failures and excessive absences. We identified 23 students, and through phone calls, emails, and other methods of contact, we were able to bring back 74% of those students, which is 17 of the 23, for two days a week of hybrid instruction. Our second subgroup in Phase 1 was our special education students with three or more failures and our intense special education students. In that subgroup, there were 35 students. After contact with their families, we were able to bring back 33 of 35 kids, which is 94% for four-day instruction each week. Today, March 15th, we kicked off Phase 2 of bringing students back into the building who needed it the most. We were able to reach out to six of six families who qualify under the McKinney-Vento Act and all accepted four-days instruction, which is 100% of those students. We are currently in the process of reaching out to our hybrid students who attend one cohort and where we see a drastic drop-off in performance those other two days they are removed. So we're in the process of reaching out to those 23 students, and we can update you with the data once we get all their responses back. Phase 3 will begin next Monday, and I think it's important to really notice that although a student may be doing well in remote learning at home, that doesn't always mean that their mental health as well. To date, in the last week, we have received 25 individualized requests from parents and from students requesting to come back into the building due to several mental health reasons. I'm glad to announce in front of the board and in front of Superintendent Holler that today we did approve all 25 of those kids. It is our commitment, as is the district's commitment, to serve every single child. And then we have the term that is safe to do so, so we will be welcoming those students back into our building on March 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. And that was just one example of how we use data to identify students' needs and implement a support intervention. Recently, Dr. Lisa Lawson sent an email to the district staff framing this model of support to ensure all students have access to education during this time. We identify a barrier, and then we select an appropriate evidence-based intervention strategy. Our team has identified four major barriers requiring support and data monitoring, as you see up on the screen. First, we recognize that we need to inform families more during this time. We're realizing that many families were unaware that their child were being absent, especially on remote days, or didn't know of support opportunities we were offering at Tally. We're proud to say that we've seen a significant decline in parents being unaware of their child being absent once we started consistently doing daily absent phone calls and bi-weekly attendance letters home. Actually, last Friday was our lowest number of absences to date. To increase families' knowledge about the additional learning opportunities and supports we have for their child, we switched to a new weekly smores newsletter that looks visually more attractive. It can translate the newsletter into any language. The data, the number of families engaging in the newsletter, has skyrocketed. In addition, our counselors follow up with about 150 families each week with a Friday check-in email with information from each of their children's teachers. And we were much more intentional this year with schedule on fall and winter parent conferences with certain families. Next, we look to address another barrier by connecting families to needed resources for their child to access learning. We went from receiving a number of phone calls every single day from families regarding internet issues, which means that their child was prevented from accessing class, to almost no connectivity issues being reported to us now after we distributed hundreds of hotspots to identified families. We also adjusted our process to distribute instruction materials at the start of each marking period by making personalized phone calls to families and making deliveries when needed to ensure that every single one of our families and students had the materials they needed to access to learn it. The next area we focused on is increasing students' sense of belonging. We know the impact of feeling connected to school and feeling connected to others has on student attendance and student achievement. Much of this has already been covered by Dr. T. when she highlighted the number of new spirit activities and clubs and revamping our lunch block. But we also began to offer morning community circles to our remote students, and we gave a connection survey to a target group of students who are receiving mentoring support. And now we're about to administer a school-wide connection survey, which will include specific connection opportunities in that survey for students to consider. The last barrier that we are addressing is supporting our students' social and emotional well-being during these challenging times. Our amazing counselors offer a lot of group and individual supports. I'm just going to mention one support that we implemented with success a couple of months ago. We identified 18 students who needed wellness support, who also show an academic and attendance struggles. We created an incentive program for these students to earn donated gift cards if they met their attendance goal, as well as doing a weekly check-in with their administrator and counselor. Our last slide shows the effectiveness of this support intervention. All students showed significant attendance improvement. Now remember, this is a continuous process of monitoring and adjusting. So now we're in the process of evaluating the increase in academic achievement for these students. The first week that you see there, the baseline data point, is actually an average of three absences per week from October through December. Then in Week 2, you see the incentive program start, which was the same week that the hybrid in-person started, which half of these students were involved in. The last week, you see the start of the four-day in-person, which a quarter of the students participated in, contributing to attendance improvement. So what we see is the positive impact that live synchronous, or especially the in-person learnings, have on student achievement. What the data is revealing is that the teacher connection matters. I just want to say a special thank you to the Tally family and a special thanks to Tally Stacy Falls and Jane Sislo for helping develop some of these slides and graphics for us. We're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Quick question. I'll kind of put you on the spot here. And we talk a lot about data-driven analysis. Are there any, throughout the tier-one and tier-two, you talked about some of the social activities, is there anything that kind of falls into social, emotional wellness that is not manifested as attendance or grade issues? Are there any other intangibles or a category that you look at of intangibles that don't fall within the data?
Yeah, so I think when we talk about data, we're also not just talking about, we're talking about qualitative data as well and not just quantitative. And so the number of weekly and daily conversations our counselors are having, our teachers are having, part of this whole process is, we spend a lot of time talking about our problem-solving team here, but there are many other components to the system that brings information and data in as we talk about students' well-being. Teachers, we talk about bi-weekly have grade-level meetings where part of that conversation is teachers talking about concerns they see, and that information gets brought up. And those concerns can come from conversations that they're having, information parents share with us. So yes, that data can come from in many different forms.
Thank you.
I had a question. Thanks so much for the presentation. So Dr. Tagleone mentioned specifically, there's a thousand things I could ask questions about, but this one struck out, stuck out for me. You discussed specifically the camera-on strategies, and it's something that I thought for a while. Teachers have a really difficult job teaching remotely as it is, and I can't imagine how they could feel any engagement when it's just a black screen they're looking at. But honestly, the majority of the time when I pop in on my kids, almost everybody's cameras are off. So could you share one or two of their strategies and how they are having an impact to keep cameras on?
Absolutely, sir. So a couple of the videos that we looked at where we really had a good discussion around that and we've seen in practice have to do with the purpose of the activity and giving students some time where it's okay to have it off and time to have it on and really structuring that and making sure you understand it has to do with the conversation. Not just that it's on so you can see somebody taking notes, but we're going to talk right now, and I need to see your face. I want to see your reaction. I need you to show me something. So some of the strategies were around showing the work, because then you have a purpose for turning the camera on, building that relationship piece, and I want to see your face. I'm so happy to see you. I want you to see me. That type of conversation. And then the reward piece that goes along with it, so framing that this really matters to me and to our classroom to have this family atmosphere, and I'm going to reward you and recognize you for it when you do that. And I think a lot of times the excitement that's around the teacher's voice and just the way that she presents things where he brings that to life. Because you can go into one classroom and that same student has the camera off, and in another classroom, that same student has the camera on. So that teacher-driven purpose for it matters a lot.
Thank you.
I have a question, and I'm going to direct it at the foreview, but if someone from the district wants to answer it, that's okay too. Personally, I have had discussions with my kids how being in-person in the schools right now is so different. The culture of the school is different. I think that there's been some mention that maybe the kids who need to be in school the most are not the kids that have come back into schools. And I kind of see that in one of your slides, how it was very intentional. You took those intentional steps to reach out to the kids that you wanted to have in the buildings. Have you, you know, other than attendance and the kids with special, you know, with IEPs and, you know, are there other ways of reaching out to the kids that, you know, have not had a lot of other engagement with us, with their teachers in the district who really would benefit from being in the school's setting?
I think one of the things we're seeing here is there's a momentum growing, like word is spreading from peer to peer, right? So there's a peer influence, and Dr. Lawson, Mr. Lawson will be able to share some of that exact data that he knows off the top of his head. But once we start, I think on our first day back, we had about 120 students come back. By last Friday, I think we had about 180 in-person showing up, though it's 200 and some on paper. And every day, we're getting about 10 more phone calls. People want to come back. So we had the group who came back who wanted to come back. We had us being intentional and purposeful, reaching out and letting parents know of the opportunity. And now word is spreading like fire, and the students want to come back now because their friends are back. So that's also been working to our advantage.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's my question is, like, you initially had students that you reached out to because they had those specific needs that you saw, but there's got to be kind of those in-between kids too that would benefit from coming back that maybe, you know, maybe we need to go that next deeper dive in the future. I think it's awesome what you've done. I love how you've attacked the issue and are approaching it and getting them back in.
We agree with you 100%, and that's why that's the phases, and that's like our phase fours we didn't even talk about, like, just keep plugging away. And we use every opportunity we have, like PTO meetings and my weekly emails, just trying to make sure everyone understands the safe and amazing opportunity we have if families want to choose to come back.
You know, we tried at the beginning of the year to let parents know that it was going to be different. I think a lot of students thought when they were going to come back that they were coming back to what they left last year at this time. And that just wasn't the case. But to Tally's team's credit, I said this the other day, you approached this not only from the professional perspective, digging into your data, identifying those kids who needed to be back, but you thought about it from the kid's perspective. Like, the extra things that they've put in that hook kids, right? The extra clubs and activities, the time to socialize, knowing that that is a void right now for those students. And then that word spread. So, yeah, when they shared this data last week about the momentum, yeah, tough when you, you're a middle-school kid and you walk into your science class the first day of hybrid and you look around and there's three other kids with you, and you were expecting to see all your old friends. But now, because of that team-building, that enthusiasm, now they're walking in and they're seeing eight or nine. And then pretty soon, see 10 and 11. And we'll have that subgroup that want to stay home. They have no interest in coming in person. But how do we entice and invite in those tweeners, right? Those ones in between? And to your point, they haven't just focused on just the in-person hybrid students, but they focused on the social and emotional wellness and interaction even with their Zoom students. And this can't be done, not as well as the data is showing, without absolute 100% team. And this can't be done, not as well as the data is showing, without absolute one-hundred-percent team effort and total buy-in from the staff. And I've had the privilege of walking the building three times in the last, I don't know, maybe six, seven weeks. And every time you're there, you can feel it. School culture is a very difficult thing to define. I don't think there's a decent written explanation, it's something that you feel. And when you walk into Tally with what they've got going on, even in the middle of a pandemic, you know that school culture exists, that the kids feel valued, that they believe in the education, and that's a middle school student, which is not easy to do. And the teachers are right there behind the students, supporting at every opportunity. To the point where guidance counselors are calling individual students during class. If that kid is late or not in the class, they've identified those students whose parents need to be called right then and there, even if they're a Zoomer, because they're not connected or they're not engaged. The depth to which they're going to support kids is just amazing, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you. And last month, we heard part one of the district's Learning Leap Plan to address some of the resources and strategies to, you know, catch students up from some of the learning loss. Tonight, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Cora Scott, Ms. Warner, Dr. Kutch, and Ms. McKinney will share part two.
All right, good evening, President Scrobop, members of the board, Superintendent Holer, and members of the audience. Thank you for having us this evening to present part two of our Learning Leap Plans. The district leadership team, who continues to work on these plans, include myself, Dr. Michelle Kutch, Ms. Yolanda McKinney, Ms. Lavina James Davis, Ms. Cora Scott, and Dr. Lisa Lawson. And a special thanks to all the principals who are an integral part in this process. So last month, as was mentioned in part one, we did an overview of the Learning Leap Program, which is our program to support unfinished learning and accelerate students for success, which will also include summer programming, which has entitlement and ESY services, and recovery services for students with disabilities. Our goals of the Learning Leap, as a reminder, are to mitigate that unfinished learning, utilize those research-based practices to make sure students have the prerequisite skills and standards that they need to move forward, as well as accelerate their learning and provide them opportunities to look ahead at some of those key standards and continue with the social-emotional development as we, you know, just heard the importance of the self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, and relationship skills as they move forward. And we also have been taking a look at student identification, and a special thanks to Ken Hutchins, our Supervisor of Assessment and Accountability and Curriculum Instruction, who has been helping us gather this data so that we can make those data-informed decisions. We are looking at attendance for specific courses, as well as lack of attendance because of the lack of engagement or other extenuating circumstances. Additionally, we've been looking at those academic components related to the standards by examining the grades and the competencies, as well as how students have been performing on our MAP assessments and other critical skills. And again, continue to look at that SEL, the social-emotional learning, through our different programs that are in use, NearPod, Suite 360, and continuing to look at signs of mental health needs in our students. So the screen shows you an overview of Learning Leap, which again includes the fall, spring, summer continuum. But tonight specifically, we're going to share with you the plans for spring learning support, which will include Wednesday Academy after-school programs and credit recovery, which are all-inclusive of all of our students, including students with unique learning needs.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. We're going to move into the supports that will be provided this spring for elementary. Our teachers truly understand, and they're working hard in the classroom to support our students. But they also understand that for many of our students, they need additional time, time after school. Our principals, as well as our teachers, have looked over the data, whether it was the report card, progress monitoring, map data, all of that, to decide and make a decision on students who definitely could benefit from receiving additional support. So for our elementary case managers, we have a number of teachers who are interested in taking on this role, position. They will be assigned ten students from each grade level, and within a week, they will meet with this great group of students, twenty to thirty minutes per week, and provide many lessons based on the needs of the students. They will also be providing and supporting and monitoring progress at all times, analyzing reports, making sure that communication is passed on to the parents, and communicating with the students' teachers as well. That communication is going to be critical on how the students are progressing after school. Student engagement, making sure that there are incentives available for the student, and for every lesson, there will be a motivation lesson as well, or activity. Also with English Language Arts, our students will be using Epic. And Epic is an online reading resource with over forty thousand highly engaging books for our students. They will maintain a writing log as they read their books or assignments throughout the week. For our math, additional enrichment there, students will be assigned their DreamBox learning path, and teachers will check to see how they're doing as well. And they will be addressed or assigned their individual targets as well. For our school-wide base program, we have a number of schools who are providing this support as well, where they are providing both academic after-school as well as enrichment. With reading and math support, we even have schools that are providing Spanish emergent support after-school. We plan to support our ELL students and their language development. For our enrichment program, and this is just a few, we will be providing photography after-school, robotics, ukulele and recorder, as well as cultural awareness for our students.
Thank you, Lavina.
Thank you.
Middle school spring learning support. So our schools have been working with small groups of students on Wednesdays, but not just there, but also on hybrid days, remote learning days. Staff have been finding the time in the morning, during lunch, afternoons, to provide tutoring sessions, support groups, really looking at focus areas with ELA and math, but specifically skill-building exercises, reading, writing, using math interventions, looking at providing small mini lessons of common areas of struggle, but also including those fun enrichment activities. So very similar to what you just saw with Lavina, what she had explained with regards to the elementary school case managers. We also have an opportunity to provide middle school case managers. Buildings are currently working out their logistics, but our middle school case managers model will also monitor ten to twenty students from each grade level. So even though Wednesday Academy will be offered, we're also trying to reach as many students as possible. We'll base this on grades and attendance. Check-ins will be provided, twenty to thirty minutes a week, again, mini lessons based on identified areas of need. With regards to monitoring progress, case managers will interpret analytical reports from our digital resources, things like Zern, DreamBox, and the like. They'll also provide parent and teacher updates, because these case managers may not necessarily be the student's primary teacher. So they'll provide their teacher updates as well, let them know how they're doing. And then also trying to keep up with student engagement. So just like Lavina had mentioned, again, case managers will be providing encouragement, weekly incentives to keep students engaged, and making sure that they're getting the help they need to meet their goals. With regards to the content and the curriculum, they'll be used, the focus will be ELA and math. We'll be utilizing Apex tutorials using the MAP data. What's interesting about that is that you can actually take the MAP data and put it into Apex, and it will differentiate and individualize the lessons on that particular system. So we'll be utilizing that. And then also Zern, DreamBox, Number Talks with our math resources. In addition, we're promoting that students read, we know the research shows, read, 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 and the importance around that. And so we'll also be providing high-interest reading for the students, where they'll get choice, and also encouraging them to write.
Thank you, Dr. Kutch. So as we think about high school, we know that high school is credit-bearing. So we want to support our students to continue making that progress. So we have continued again with our Wednesday Academy, as well at the high school level. Our students are being provided with small-group support. Our kids who are in advanced placement and CT need to earn their CT industry credentials are coming to school. Culinary and hospitality students have already been coming in on those hybrid days and Wednesdays. And I'm happy to report that they have been able to earn their SafeServe certification. So again, at the high school level, we're looking to make sure that our students are continuing to earn the credits that they need to progress. So with that in mind, all three of our high schools have instituted credit recovery. We are using the Apex learning model, and that model is used in-person, as well in check-in support for those students who are remote. This is underway at all three of our high schools currently. And most recently, we have begun a new partnership called the WAVE Program. It is a partnership with the Department of Health and Social Services. As you can see on the slide, it does have a target audience of sixteen- to eighteen-year-olds, and students must meet an income eligibility criteria. They are provided with learning support guides, which are similar to mentors. These are students, well, they are qualified adults who guide the students with their remote learning, and they do that in small groups called pods. Students are required to engage in their classes, and in addition, they are also provided with workforce development. This is housed at the Boys and Girls Club, which is on Darley Road, and students are given the opportunity to earn up to two hundred dollars a week for following all the guidelines that are outlined in this program. So as we continue to make sure that our students are progressing, we are coming back to you next month to talk to you about our plans for summer, and then we will return in May to talk to you about our plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So thank you very much, and at this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about our Learning Leap Program.
I have a quick question. So is there any pathway or dedicated resources for juniors and seniors, specifically seniors who need additional supports to confidently meet the necessary requirements for graduation? Would this be in conjunction based on age-wise with the WAVE Program? Is there something separate, you know, Tally talked a lot about outreach, what kind of outreach is done, you know, to maybe some students who are at risk or on the verge of not graduating, that we can, you know, help them get back on track?
I can say that the high school principals and the counselors are working very closely with those students. Again, they do have a prioritized list, they are identifying students and getting those students into credit recovery as soon as possible. Again, they're reaching out to those seniors who are what we consider to be are in the middle. And if we just get them in and get them the credits that they need, they'll be able to walk across that stage. But again, it is a combined effort with the counselors, with the principals, getting those kids into those classes on Apex that they need so that they can earn their credits and recover those credits, and even earn extra credits if that's what's necessary. So it's very intentional, based on the students that the counselors have identified.
Great, thank you.
I had a quick question. First, thanks so much for everything you guys are doing, this program sounds amazing. I was curious a little bit about funding, I wanted to make sure the teachers that are being the monitors for after-school, is this a paid position? And also, you mentioned something about the money that the students get if they do their work, and where does that money come from?
So the teachers who are working after-school are being provided EPR, so the answer to that question is yes. And the money that the students are being paid is coming through the DHS S partnership. It is their way of, we have lots of students who, quite frankly, are making a choice to work as their preference, because their families need that income. So this program was developed through the WAVE to try and encourage students to prioritize their education while still allowing them the opportunity to make the money that they need to support their family.
How are the students selected for that program?
So there is a, there was a list of criteria provided for us, Reverend Perry, and I would be happy to share that list with you, but it is income-based, and it is based on age. And then students have to meet certain qualifications and criteria, and I would be happy to share that information with you.
Ms. McKinney? I have a, oh, just a follow-up. So if a student automatically meets the criteria listed on the slide, are they automatically accepted into the WAVE Program?
So I don't know if they're automatically accepted. What I do know is there's an onboarding process. So the counselors identify all the students who meet that criteria, then those names are submitted, and then from there, the WAVE Program, I guess you call them board, determine who is accepted into the program. So we do not determine that, we simply identify people who meet the criteria.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two questions about that same program.
Okay.
So if it's, or is Brandywens School District providing transportation for the students to get to the program?
Yes, ma'am.
And is the student excused from their high school classes in order to attend the program?
No, they must do both. So while they are at the Boys and Girls Club, they are engaging in their hybrid learning. So the learning portion is, so they're, they're at the Boys and Girls Club, they're logged in with their device, and they are participating in their classes, and they are being monitored and supported with one of these learning support guides. So they are required as a part of being in this program to engage in their courses.
Great, thank you very much.
I have a question about the part of the slide.
Okay.
Can I go back to that? Can you go back to the elementary slides? That would be great. So my question is regarding this program for the elementary students, and I think there was a slide that showed, oh, I'm sorry, you were just on it, but it had the thirty minutes of extra work for kids. So I guess this is going to be on Wednesdays, is that right? When the kids are in an asynchronous day? They could use it during that time, but it has the flexibility that they could be working on it over the week, or even the weekend. Okay. Has there been any consideration to moving the elementary schedule to add additional time back? Has there been any consideration to moving the elementary schedule to add additional time back in?
Not at this time. We have not discussed that further, not at this time. Right now, our focus is to try our best to get additional students in to either cohorts or the four days a week.
So Ms. Pidgen, it is very complex the way the bus schedules meet with elementary schedule, middle school, high school, then separate bush runs. So it's not as easy as just changing a schedule on paper. And there's a ripple effect across the board, again, because of the bus shortage and the number of routes that are needed. So we've looked at several variations, trying to take a look at increased academic time. We heard that at the board meeting two months ago, went back and looked at opportunities at the high school and middle school level, especially around that lunch period time. And I'll get into that a little bit more in my board report. You heard Mr. Rivera allude to it earlier about the push to get middle school and high school back in more than two days a week, the push to get elementary back in to the largest extent possible, more than two days a week. If that was to happen, we couldn't regain any of that time around the lunch periods at the middle school and high school, which then affects our ability to bus route elementary, drop off and pickup. So it's a tangled web and any change has some serious ripple effects across the other areas. I don't know if that helps. It's a little convoluted, but we have looked at multiple angles at trying to increase time. And in the configuration that we have to deal with, it's just not possible at this time unless we don't try to bring kids in more than two days a week. And that's a primary goal of ours right now.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Ms. Lavina Jones Davis, who will share an update on our Spanish emergent program.
Thank you very much. So good evening, President Skrabach, our superintendent, distinguished board members, and our BSD family and staff members. This evening, I will be sharing with you an update on our first cohort of Spanish Emergent students as they prepare for middle school this coming fall. We are excited. I will also provide you with information on the middle school immersion model and the preparation involved in welcoming our immersion families as well as our Immersion's fifth grade students. Throughout the years, you have received presentation and updates on Spanish Emergent. But I thought this particular slide was important to think back to two thousand and eleven, where our former governor Markell's World Language Expansion Initiative, it was his vision in preparing a globally competitive Delaware workforce. And this was in two thousand and eleven. And what I really, really liked about this was that his emphasis was on providing these opportunities for our students in elementary, beginning in kindergarten, instead of waiting until middle school or high school. So his vision here was in ten years, ten-year initiative. His goal was twenty immersion programs. Let's see how well we're doing as a state of Delaware. When you look at this particular slide here, Delaware Dual Language Immersion Program, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we had three districts. For the upcoming year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, we will have twelve districts in the state of Delaware. Look at the schools, fifty-four schools. And in two thousand twelve, we had three. We went from two hundred forty-five students in Immersion to eight thousand one hundred students enrolled in Immersion. Truly success there. The program is definitely growing. As we move on and think about when we first implemented Spanish Emergent for the Brandywine School District, at that time, I was a principal at Lancashire and I was definitely in favor of bringing Spanish Emergent to Lancashire. We started in our district at Claymont Elementary School, two thousand fifteen. We monitored the progress, listened to the parents, saw the excitement from our teachers at Claymont Administration and decided to open two additional schools with Spanish Emergent, two thousand eighteen. And here we are, two thousand twenty-one, where these students will be moving on to middle school. Out of the fifty students who started in two thousand fifteen in kindergarten, we have forty-five remaining students that will be going on to Tally Middle School. So definitely success there. When we look at our enrollment, if you could go back one slide, when we look at our enrollment, we have always had an average of fifty students per class or per grade level in our kindergarten immersion. But of course, with the pandemic last year, whether it was emergent or non-emergent, our kindergarten parents were really reluctant to send their students to school and definitely learning a new language. But what we're noticing, and just like someone said earlier, every week, someone is calling back to see if their child can be enrolled in kindergarten. So our numbers are fairly compatible to our non-emergent classrooms. And as far as our staffing is concerned, I am very pleased to say that each year on the elementary level where we've had to hire a Spanish teacher, we have been very successful in doing so. Just last week, we interviewed for Spanish teachers for next year because at Lancashire and Maple Lane, their students will be progressing to fourth grade. So we had qualified candidates who were interested and excited with a very strong background in dual language program who are interested in coming into and joining our Brandywine School District Immersion. So with middle school tally, Mr. Rivera has already identified the two teachers, which he will discuss later in this presentation, who are identified as the immersion teachers for next year. We can anticipate in about two years or so, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, we will have our fourth graders advancing on to middle school. We will probably need an additional Spanish teacher at that time. I'd like to send a special congratulations to our Claymont administrators and teachers for the hard work in preparing these students academically and culturally to move on and continue immersion in middle school. Next slide. I thought that it was important, you know, to share with you the academic progress of our students in immersion. Just like all of our students, we are providing assessments, whether it is MAP, whether it is DIBELS classroom assessment, we are doing the same for our immersion students as well. But specifically for immersion, it is important that we also measure their language proficiency in the targeted language. So in third grade, our students take what's called Apple Test, which measures their reading, writing, speaking skills. So when you look at this data, this is from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, when these very students, our fifth graders, were in third grade because last year, we could not provide this assessment because of the pandemic. Fortunately, this year, we just finished administering the apple to our students. So let's look at this data for a second. So our students for Spanish language proficiency, the percentage of students that are at or above the targeted language is eighty-eight percent according to this assessment. That is amazing. And that definitely gives credit to what our Spanish and English partners are doing in the classroom. Approaching the target language, we have ten percent. So again, this test is administered when students are in third grade, but we also check for language proficiency for kindergarten, first, second grade as well. Next, please. I thought it was important to also provide some data comparing our students for our immersion students with their peers. So looking again at this fifth grade class from data two thousand eighteen, nineteen for smarter balance, let's look at ELA. So forty-five percent of our students reached proficiency on that particular assessment. Claymont Non-Emergent, forty-two percent, and Claymont Immersion, fifty percent proficient. So really outnumbering those other students there. In math, it's basically comparable, thirty-eight percent proficiency. Next, please. For our middle school model, this is actually the model that we have for, from the Department of Education. And if you turn to the next slide, go to the next slide. I just wanted to quickly show you the difference between elementary model and also for middle school. So for elementary, our students receive instruction in the targeted language fifty percent of the day. That means that math, science, and language art are taught in Spanish. And then our English partner teacher takes care of social studies and English language arts. It's so critical that we are providing our students with constant practice of the targeted language, speaking, listening, writing. So many of our students, fifth grade right now, are biliterate. Of course, our goal is to move them to be multiliterate or multilingual. For our middle school continuum, you notice there's a difference. For middle school, it reads middle school immersion continuation. And that is because in middle school, our students will be receiving thirty percent of instruction in the targeted language. So anytime you have instruction delivered under below fifty percent, the state considers that continuation program. In middle school, our students, and Kenny will talk about this later, but each year, they will receive advanced levels of Spanish. And they'll receive a Spanish class every day and for three years, all of their social studies will be in Spanish as well. Next slide. Our focus today, or this evening I should say, is basically on the transition from elementary to middle school. In a year to two years, we will be sitting down with the state as well, or DOE, talking specifically about the plans for high school. For middle school right now, once our students do reach into middle school in the fall, there will be a great emphasis in making sure that these students receive advanced immersion or Spanish language in preparation for the possibility of them taking AP class in high school. So I will come back and revisit the high school model as we get closer. But the good thing about this is for those students who continue with high school immersion, they have that opportunity of basically taking college courses during their high school time. Okay, next. Our credits. And next, we have Kenny Rivera, who is the proud, proud principal of Tally Middle School, who is extremely excited about Spanish immersion coming to his school. Kenny?
Thank you very much, Lavina. I want to start by letting the board and community know that Tally has been looking forward to offering the immersion program. Immersion fits very well into our building's focus on global connectedness. And we know the academic and social benefits of the immersion learning. Assistant Principal Dr. Tretaglun and I have been excited to use our experience with immersion to create a high-quality program at Tally. When I served on a sister board, I worked to bring about a number of immersion programs. And I currently have the pleasure of having the experience to be an immersion parent. Dr. T brings years of experience of teaching world language and understanding the curriculum to our planning. With the help of Assistant Superintendent Cora Scott, we started implementing Tally's plan for our arrival of immersion two years ago. And DOE has been beyond impressed with our planning because we have been a year ahead of every implementation target that they have. Next slide. So here's just a few of the many items that we have accomplished thus far. We've collaborated with a number of other immersion schools, notably Skyline and Claymont. We've done classroom visits, many planning meetings with our teachers and admin. We've added Spanish language books to our own Tally library. We are working to identify native Spanish-speaking students to join the program. We've conducted a lot of outreach to families. We've had three mailers, we've had a fall information meeting. We're having another spring information meeting and we're working on creating a logo that will go on t-shirts for all of our students as well. Excellent, thank you. The most important action that we took thus far has been the hiring of two very strong immersion teachers. We recruited the best and we had two openings over the past two years. First is Lindsay Anderson. She's one of the best teachers I've ever seen and worked with, who I've worked with her many years right here in this building at Brandywine. She was the AP Spanish teacher. And that's important to remember because when students leave us after Tally, they will go to high school and the course that they take in ninth grade is AP Spanish. So who better to teach your students and know what to prepare them for than someone who spent years teaching that course very well and very successfully? And the second teacher we have is Hugo Valistegi, who was one of my top EP government students here fifteen years ago. He's a native Spanish speaker and certified in both social studies and world language. And they've been busy all year planning this curriculum for their students next year. Last slide. So the two most frequent questions I've received from parents have been, one, can immersion students also participate in IB? And two, what is the immersion schedule? So to IB, absolutely. The immersion connects perfectly with IB's global connectedness philosophy. Tally's immersion program will continue to be inclusive of all students. Any student currently enrolled in the elementary immersion program should remain in the program and have full access to all of our academic programs and extracurricular activities at Tally. Any other student not enrolled in immersion can apply for the immersion program as long as they demonstrate the needed level of Spanish proficiency. And then regarding the schedule, immersion students will follow the same middle school schedule as their peers at Tally. They will have at least ninety minutes per day of Spanish instruction, which will take place in two different classes. The first one would be the Spanish language arts class, which is different than their ELA class. This will take the place of their world language class that most sixth graders have. And this class will focus on Spanish language and literacy and is aligned to Common Core. The second class they will take is now they'll take their social studies class in the Spanish language. And DOE has already translated the Delaware recommended curriculum into Spanish for us. So again, we are excited to offer this amazing opportunity to our community at Tally Middle School. And at this point, I'll hand it back over to Lavina and we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Rivera. Any questions or comments at this time?
No, I think you answered my initial. I came into this with questions regarding students proficiency versus their peers, which you answered in the early slides. And I know Kenny, Mr. Rivera, just mentioned that students could enter the program at the middle school level if they had a proficiency. Is there any more flexibility with the elementary students in entering the program midstream? Or do you have to begin with that cohort in the kindergarten or first grade level? Or do you have to begin with that cohort in the kindergarten or first grade level?
I, I, okay, I can answer that. Now, of course, we, we are willing to take kids in first grade as well, but it all depends on the class size. If we're already at third, you know, twenty-six, twenty-seven students, then we usually will just cap it there. But we will and have taken students in first grade, also students who have been in emergent in the state of Delaware or in other states, whether they're in second through fifth, we are willing to accept them as well, and we have.
Thank you.
And again, I just want to also thank, my last slide was a list of, of individuals that I would like to thank. I'd like to send a special thanks to Cora Scott as well for handing this over to me, Spanish Emergent. She's done an excellent job in supporting the program and continues to support the program as well as the board superintendent, and excellent job to all of our Spanish Emergent schools, Lancashire, Maple Lane, and everyone who has supported us. Thank you.
Very, thank you very much. Moving right along, Mr. Holder, Superintendent's report. General District.
Good evening, board members, audience, staff, and community members listening at home. It's my pleasure to share some great news from a multitude of schools and program areas this month. I'd like to publicly recognize and congratulate two Concord High School seniors for being awarded the coveted Gold Key in the Scholastic Writing and Art Awards. The Scholastic Awards are the nation's longest-running and most prestigious recognition of young artists and writers in grades seven through twelve. Mandy Wang received two Gold Key Awards, one for her portfolio collection and another Gold Key in painting for the piece seen here. Fellow senior Bradley Elizabeth Grable earned her Gold Key Award in drawing with this incredible piece. Congratulations to Mandy and Bradley, who are now in an elite group of previous Gold Key recipients, such as Andy Warhol, Stephen King, Jacob Landrow, and Truman Capote. The Brandywine School District has a long and impressive list of accomplishments and recognitions related to STEM education. From a lengthy list of nominees and recipients of the Presidential Award for Excellence in the Teaching of Math and Science, to students competing and winning in regional and national competitions, such as the MIT Lemelson Innovation Challenge, Brandywine excels. I am thrilled to report that the legacy of excellence in STEM education in Brandywine is alive and well. On Thursday, March fourth, a multiple, multitude of BSD teachers were honored at the State of Delaware STEM Council Educator Rewards. Congratulations to Leona Williams from Fourwood Elementary, who was named Elementary STEM Educator of the Year. Board members, you might think that that picture looks a little familiar, and it should. Leona, just a few years ago, was a nominee for the Presidential Award for Excellence in the Teaching of Math and Science. And she was also our District Teacher of the Year two years ago. Congratulations also to the PS De Pont STEM Department of Stella Evans, Sam Fawkes, Stephen Lee, and Arnie Rio, who received the Middle School Educator, well, make that Educators of the Year Award. This dynamic foursome had built a coordinated series of courses that exposed students to a variety of STEM-related experiences with the opportunity to go more in-depth on those that pique their individual interests. The Delaware STEM Educator Awards recognize certified teachers and community educators to demonstrate STEM innovation and excellence through teaching, academic collaboration, and student engagement. If you've ever been in Leona's classroom or the STEM lab down in PS, you know that innovation, excellence, and collaboration and engagement are exactly what takes place every day. And I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the virtual awards event was hosted and moderated by Delaware STEM Council Co-Chair and Brandywine High School Engineering Teacher, Dr. Judd Wagner. Brandywine continuing to lead the way in more ways than one in STEM education. Last week, I had the honor of being present when Tally Middle School received its banner and a surprise thousand-dollar grant from the Delaware State Chamber of Commerce as a superstar in education recipient. Tally received this recognition last year for its Student Advisory Committee. The work being done at Tally to foster positive connections through peer relationships, student and staff relationships, mentoring, social-emotional learning opportunities, and character building is simply astounding. Staff, students, and families recognize the importance of a strong, positive school culture and the impact it has on learning, social-emotional development, and behavior. Ultimately, students feel more connected to school and more comfortable discussing a variety of topics with the peers, staff members, and families. Kudos to the entire Tally community for embracing this model. The recognition is certainly well-deserved. And thank you to the Newcastle County Chamber of Commerce for its continued support of educational innovation. Schools celebrated Read Across America in a variety of ways. Here are two examples. To strengthen the relationship between the Harlan Community and Wilmington Police Department, WPD officers read to Harlan students last week, including the ones learning at home, and distributed books from the United Way of Delaware, my very own library program. Our thanks to WPD and the United Way for their partnership. More than three hundred and fifty Hanby Elementary students and family members participated in a read aloud webinar with author Rita Williams Garcia. Hanby students in all grades are reading her novel One Crazy Summer as one of their One School, One Book initiatives, where teachers recording read alows for some of the younger learners and associated activities to support the readings. The novel won the Scott Odell Award for Historical Fiction and the Coretta Scott King Award, and was a National Book Award finalist. Students asked Ms. Williams Garcia great questions about her writing process, which of the characters she most identifies with, and whether or not she also illustrated her book. In turn, Mrs. Williams Garcia encouraged the students to read like a writer, write a little bit every day, and add drawings to their writing if they are so inspired to do so. I'll also throw in a pitch at this time to remind parents that it's time to register for kindergarten. Registration is open and being handled online. There are details on the BSD website at www.BrandyWineschools.org backslash registration. As a reminder, students must be five years old by August thirty-first in order to register for kindergarten. On a related note, we're also enrolling feeder pattern students for our Spanish immersion program at Claymont, Lancashire, and Maple Lane. All three schools have Zoom information sessions set up for interested kindergarten families. That information is also on the BSD website. There is a shortcut right on the homepage under Headlines. Last weekend, Springer Middle School hosted a regional VEX robotics tournament. You might remember that Board Member Jason Heller presented on the Brandywine Bots Robotics Program. And Jason was instrumental in organizing that tournament last weekend. The competition was stiff as robotics teams from Delaware, North Jersey, Maryland, Virginia, and as far away as Georgia made the drive in order to compete. Just a quick example. So here you see a, a team of robotic engineers from Mount Pleasant High School, and they just competed against another team. To give you an idea kind of what happens, after they compete, they run back to their pit area, meet as a group, kick around ideas, look at the data, discuss changes, start to reprogram and recode, and make any mechanical adjustments. Can tell you, after having been involved in VEX robotics for the past four years, this is by far the most complex robots that students have built to date. I have some video footage that I took on Saturday that I can't wait to share with the board at the next meeting. So you can get a, a true understanding of the outstanding opportunity that students are getting in terms of coding and mechanics and STEM by participating in VEX robotics. So thank you, Mr. Heller, for your leadership on that initiative. Nothing but rave reviews from those in attendance last weekend. And I would like to let everybody know that Brandywine did come out with some winners. So congratulations to a Tally team coming out of the middle school, Ryan Cloud, Eric, Jack, Max, and Noah, and a high school team from Mount Pleasant High School, Colin, Stephen, Aiden, Liam, and Carrie. The names with the asterisk, those asterisks are the team captains. These two teams, by winning their division on Saturday, now qualify for the state VEX tournament, so we're excited about that. Of course, none of that happens without great help. And just a special thank you. Here's what it took to pull off an outstanding VEX robotics tournament, even though we were remote and the competitors were there, were socially distanced. You can see the number of staff members, and so thank you to the parent volunteers, the staff volunteers, the parents. And then we also had twenty National Honor Society students volunteer to come and help at the tournament. What a great service to support their district and their fellow community. So thank you to all that volunteered to make it a success. Like to also give the board, we alluded to a little update in turning, in terms of the hybrid learning that we have underway. Just a quick reminder that we've been through several phases, the most recent of which was that Phase Five, where once we got all the students back in that we knew were interested in some form of in-person learning, we wanted to make sure that we were looking at data and identifying those students who were still remote, but were struggling academically. And you heard a great example of, of how one school, and I know all of the schools have been doing this, reached out to the parents and guardians of those individuals, encouraging them to sign up for remote. And we have met with varying degrees of success. We do have some parents who still want to keep their child at home full-time in remote. But it is now time, as we mentioned, our next phase is to increase capacity of the current hybrid students. So most of our schools right now are offering the vast majority of their students two days per week. At the high school and middle school levels, looking at the number of students, class capacity, and I do have to throw in a special thank you to our parents. Because if you remember way back in August and September, we mentioned how critical it would be that in order to provide students and the, the majority of students that we could get in with some type of hybrid instruction, the degree to which would be based on transportation. And if at all possible, if parents could provide transportation instead of using the bus, we would greatly appreciate it. To that point, I can tell you that bus capacity is not an issue at middle school and high school right now. I believe we have two buses that are facing some capacity issues in both of those runs, which is amazing. Met with the Transportation Department the other day. They're in the process of reworking those routes. So in meeting with the principals and the administrative teams of all six secondary buildings independently, we are confident that within the next probably two weeks, we will begin to bring back in-person for either three days or four days the vast majority of our high school and middle school students. We will try to coordinate that across the six secondaries, and we'll be communicating that with parents. At the elementary level, the same approach has been taken. But if you remember, we shared that the original survey had about fifty-fifty overall from pre-K twelve, fifty percent of their parents wanted hybrid for their students, fifty percent wanted remote. We have seen a spike in the number of parents who are interested in hybrid. So right now, currently, we are overall at the elementary level serving sixty-three percent of our parents have chosen some form of hybrid. The highest buildings right now, I'll give you an example, Carcroft has seventy-three percent of its students in for hybrid. Lombardi is right behind him with, with seventy-two percent, but as an average across all of our elementary, we're at sixty-three percent. At middle school, we're at fifty-four percent, and at high school, we're at thirty-eight percent. So it won't be as easy expanding the opportunities for all students to receive four days at the elementary level. The numbers are too high. I've received several emails from families asking at what point all elementary students will come back. The plain and simple answer to that is we need to have the bus restrictions lifted. Right now, if you remember, elementary bus that held seventy-two last year only holds twenty-three this year due to the restrictions. And then we're also bound by class sizes and its square foot parameters of each classroom. Once those are lifted, then we can return to most likely a five-day full-time offering for elementary students. Between now and next week, if they're already doing it, our elementary principals are working with staff members to identify which classrooms have extra capacity and to identify students based on need, who may need an additional day, maybe additional two days of in-person hybrid instruction. But please understand, this is all based on capacity numbers. So there could be already classrooms at the elementary level that are at capacity and won't be able to offer additional opportunities simply due to that square footage calculation. Again, we believe at the middle school and high school level, talking to the principals, there are a few classes that will exceed the capacity limits. They're working out alternate schedules where, let's say, you have a class, Mr. Scrobot, can only hold fifteen individuals, but for period three, there are seventeen that would need to be in that class. Two of your students would go sit in Mr. Heller's class, so he could provide supervision. They would still participate via Zoom. That way, instead of missing and having to stay home for all four class periods, they could be in-person for three, and the other one would still be like a remote learning opportunity. And principals are going to try to adjust so it's not the same two students every week that have to go sit in Mr. Heller's room. that have to go sit in Mr. Heller's room. But again, we would rather see them in class, in the building, those three periods than have to stay at home because one period doesn't work out for them. Still keeping an eye on the COVID data, we have great news to report. From a local level, we have significantly gone down in terms of the number of new cases per 100,000 since January, where we were close to 900 at one point. We are down to 300 and you can see where we stand compared to the other local districts around us. Go a step further, we take a look at the percent of positivity. Again, if you remember, at one point we were over 10%. We are now down to 3.8%. And in terms of total vaccinations, two months ago, Delaware was significantly behind our other two, our other three contiguous states. Happy to report that that's no longer the case and you'll hear in a minute how Brandywine helped the cause of getting more educators vaccinated. So in terms of total vaccinations and first dose vaccinations, we're looking good. Now, I did say that there's significant good news, but we also have to keep an eye on the data, the research. So when we look at the total number of new cases over a 14 day period, Delaware, surprisingly, we're fourth in the country right now in terms of the highest per 100,000 new caseload. And if you look, that's not the direction we want to be going when we look at a 14 day trend. And I mention that because we have mentioned for the past two more board meetings, I brought it to your attention in January, that experts were predicting, taking a look at the COVID variants, those predictions started back in January with an article from the CDC stating that according to some models, one of the variants, the 117, could become the most predominant strain of COVID by mid to late March. We've been tracking, as you know, I've been sending the board articles, just keeping you abreast of the expansion and the spread of what we're seeing with the variant. More and more experts are now starting to raise alarm to keep an eye on this. The variants in some degrees are ranging anywhere from 35 to estimates up to even 70% more contagious than the original strain, as well as causing in some cases more severe reactions and greater fatalities. I pray that those predictions do not come to fruition. The CDC, as mentioned last meeting, released some urgent articles encouraging the vaccination of single dose versus two doses to try to get as many people with a single dose. They were doing that for a reason. Seeing the trend, the one variant is doubling every 10 days in terms of the number of cases. And again, I point this out just so that we keep it on our radar, we don't let our guards down. 370 cases, if we trace back to where the last time we were at 370 cases, it would be about mid-November. And we were not comfortable with the number of cases in mid-November, nor should we be comfortable with the number of cases now. I am thrilled to report that our school level data still looks excellent in terms of are our school sources of transmission at this point? The answer is no. But as you see other states lifting restrictions, I am cautious and leery. I think we need to see two to three more weeks of solid data to see if the predictions of the variant, the more contagious form of the variant are actually the predominant strain. And if they are, we're going to have to keep that on our radar and make sure that we are doubling down on all the mitigation strategies that we currently have in place. It is not the time to let up. We've got some sister districts and districts just across the line that are even contemplating middle school sports. At this point, I have told our middle school principals that we're not moving forward until we can see more data, two to three weeks away, to see if the predictions are panning out and it's the more predominant strain. So we will continue to monitor faithfully. I've gotten quite a few emails about how can you not follow in the data and the science? Believe me, I am following the data and I'm following the science. And I owe that to you as board members, I owe it to my children, my parents, and when I say that, I mean you, the community. We're going to do our due diligence, we're going to continue to monitor the data and the research. I'm not an alarmist, but I know what I don't know. And that's why I lean on the expertise of those that are leading the nation in these areas and have the backgrounds. So I will continue to feed the board weekly reports. And again, let's pray that our numbers keep coming down, not trickling up. And look forward to reporting hopefully some great news at the next board meeting on being able to loosen up further some of the restrictions we have. Oh, I'm still not done, sorry. Sounded like the last. Wanted to quickly let you know that still behind the scenes, our facilities department continues to do outstanding work. They have done a tremendous job at taking advantage of the time when we didn't have students in school last year and our buildings have never looked better. And this is just a glimpse inside the auditorium renovation being done right now at Claymont. Remember, the classrooms were done first, this is next on the list, followed by the gymnasium, but it is really starting to come together. We're excited at the progress. This should be done easily by the time the school's year starts next year. So we can't wait to see students in that auditorium for the first time. John Reed, as always, is on his game. There's always been the issue of risers that are not always the safest that get put up. He's thought ahead, he's having them built in to the stage itself. So more on Claymont as we continue to wrap up the project. Wanted to share just a, I guess I forgot to do the animations there, but a few cute posters that I saw as I walked through Hamby Elementary of students. Apparently, I, again, there's a couple behind it, but heartfelt messages from students to their teachers, thanking them for going above and beyond, for loving them, caring for them. And I thought this one was particularly eye catching. Even from six feet apart, you teach with all your heart. What a, what a compliment to our staff members. And then we had a big vaccination day here on Saturday with the Department of Education's largest distribution from a school site. There were 1,200 vaccines given on Saturday and that only happened due to number one, outstanding planning from the Department of Education and DPH. They had a system down that I think just worked flawlessly, they came prepared, they stayed all day. And to our staff members, I can't say enough, we put out a volunteer sheet and within two hours, and we just put it out to the building and district admin and our administrative assistants, and within two hours, every slot was filled. Within three hours, an additional 20 people squeezed their name in illegally on the volunteer sheet. And many of them stayed the entire day, serving their community, their peers, and I just can't say thank you enough. So to all that volunteered, very much appreciated. There were 70, 57 staff members, and that doesn't count DOE or DPH, who came. That evening, I was walking one of the vaccinators or inoculators out and I said, boy, that was a long day for you. And she said, yeah, but not as long as the 25 hour stint I put in down at Division of Motor Vehicles when they had that event. And I said, oh, good grief, that is incredible, but at least, you know, you're getting paid for it. And she said, no, I'm doing this voluntarily. And I, well, can I ask your name? Because I would love to recognize you at the board meeting. She said, sure, it's Janice Selikman. I said, oh, Selikman. Any relation to Tracy Selikman and Erin Selikman, who had students, children in the district? Tracy is at district office with us, oversees ELA. Erin is principal at Newark High School. And yes, it's Erin's mom. So I think it's important for us to realize that we've got community members out there who care that much that they're coming in. And that lady had given a 25 hour stint down in Dover and was up here. We put in a good 12 hours up here and she was gearing up to go somewhere the next day. That, that means a lot. So thank you to all those volunteers, that's just one story, I'm sure they all have those Just one more reason, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm proud to be ESD, and that is my report.
Thank you Superintendent Holer. Before we go to public comment, just a reminder, we do have signups if you're here in person. We'll open up the second session after new business. We're limiting everybody to three minutes, this is your opportunity to be heard. Microphones will cut off at three minutes on the Zoom. And if you're here live, three minutes, we'll thank you for your time. If you get cut off, we're just trying to be fair and consistent, it is not personal. Ms. Harris, we will start with comments on Zoom.
John, can I ask a quick question before we move on about the superintendent report?
Yes.
I apologize. So thank you, Mr. Holer, for that excellent report and I'm glad we're making a lot of progress. One question, I know you mentioned about the elementary school and that it would be difficult to open it up. I know part of its class size, but you also mentioned about buses and I know that I've seen on social media, people were concerned about us using the lack of buses as a reason why we couldn't do certain things. And so I didn't know if really if that was the limiting step, if it would be possible if we could either ask more families, if they are able to drive, to see if they could drive as well, to open up more space, or is there any way that we could get more buses?
So in terms of lack of buses, we actually have 20 buses right now that we don't have drivers for. So we have been consistently advertising, we've put things out in the newspaper, we publish things internally. We are getting ready to park our bus with the big, we're hiring bus driver sign on it. So if anyone knows, anybody who is interested in being a bus driver, has a CDL and could help out, absolutely, we will take advantage of that. So families driving, absolutely, the more families that drive, the more opportunity we have on the buses. And I guess at the elementary level, probably our biggest concern is just capacity in the room itself. And I can't remember if I made this point or not, so I apologize if I did, but I did receive some emails from parents saying, well, we're looking at some of our sister districts like Colonial, I'll use as an example. They've got their elementary kids in five days a week, if they can do it, why can't you? Colonial right now has 40% of its elementary students who are interested in hybrid. We have 63%. So if we had 40%, chances are we'd be able to offer five days a week like Colonial, but just based on the numbers, the higher you go with that percentage, the harder it is to accommodate. And that's what we found way back, if you remember, in August, when our original game plan was, let's try to get our elementary kids in five days a week all day long. And it was just too high of a percentage to make that happen. And that's what ended up in the two day model that we're in. So we're trying to expand, we'll do it to the best of our ability, but it all boils down to how many families were interested in hybrid. So thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Any other comments for superintendent's report? Hearing on, we will go again, Ms. Harris to first Zoom comment.
RJ Miles.
Mr. Miles, when you see the time, time is yours.
I think there's been a mistake. My comments are going to be referring to the deed restrictions presented later in the program. So I can't comment on what hasn't happened yet. If I may, I would like to comment later.
All right, Ms. Harris will defer Mr. Miles to after the second session.
Mark Weinberg.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I didn't see the thing on the screen. Okay, I'm also talking about deed restrictions, but since Mr. Miles will be talking later, I might as well talk now. Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to comment. For the record, my name is Mark Weinberg and I'm the proud father of three Brandywine School District graduates. I'm a member of the ad hoc group Citizens Against Res zoning, but I'm speaking for myself tonight. We can all agree that the proposed Early Learning Center will have a significant positive impact on our children. But we would also like to ensure the project has a positive impact on its immediate surrounding community. The biggest issue that anyone has ever had with Brandywine Country Club redevelopment has been the potential traffic onto Shipley from 202 because of the cut through road. The current plan for Mr. Capano is a positive one, as it does not show this road. We want to make sure that the situation continues and we need the district's help to ensure it. But now, as we learn more about the district's plan, the proposed size of the project itself and its projected traffic are concerning. We're concerned about the 500 students we learned about at last week's working group meeting. We're concerned many of them will come by private vehicles and small buses and make the local traffic load on Shipley Road overwhelming. Shipley Road only has two lanes and turning movements into the school will impede the traffic during peak times. We're concerned that Springer is only one mile down the same road and its traffic issues will only compound the situation at the proposed Bush School at this location. But what's particularly worrisome is the sheer number of trips that can be projected. The 2009 traffic study for the new Hamby school that's available on the county's website showed that there are 346 AM peak trips for a building of 74,000 square feet, which is about the same size as proposed for the new Bush School and offers busing for all students. To put that number of trips in perspective, Mr. Capano's initial submission, which had over 50% more units that he's now proposing and had the cut through road traffic also, that project only generated 121 AM peak trips. Thus, the community will experience three times more traffic with the school. Yes, I recognize that the square footage requirements for the original Hamby may be different than that from a special needs school. So let's just cut the numbers in half. The community will still have more than 40% more traffic than originally proposed by Mr. Capano. And these numbers don't include the traffic generated by families coming to use the ancillary services, extra staffing, or the previously mentioned vehicle and grounds maintenance garage. Traffic is why we're worried and why the deed restrictions have been proposed as they've been. We hope that communications with the district can be enhanced through additional meetings in which we work together as partners to make everyone comfortable with the outcome. I suggest that these be smaller working meetings and not formal ones like this board meeting. I recognize that the board needs to sign off on any agreement, but it does not need to be involved in the proverbial sausage making. I'm confident that a smaller group from the staff can represent, represent the district and present to you its recommendations. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg.
Zoom comments are complete.
Thank you. We do have some live comments. First up, Kim Stock. First up, Kim Stock.
Superintendent Holer, school board members and members of the community, my name, good evening, my name is Kim Stock, and my husband and I have been BSD parents since two thousand and six, when our oldest daughter was in the gifted program. We have a current freshman at Brandywine High School. I am also an English and English learner teacher at McCain High School for the Red Clay School District. And I have been honored to be named the two thousand and twenty one Delaware Teacher of the Year. I'm here to publicly announce I am running for the BSD School Board. Our family has made North Wilmington our home since two thousand and three. I want to publicly give a huge shout out to my daughter's past and present teachers and all the BSD educators. My children have had the best education we have ever imagined. There are too many to mention, but I'd like to thank all of Hanby and Sandy Meredith for welcoming my daughter in the second grade. There is no greater feeling as a parent. In addition to my career as a teacher, I was the Education Manager for the Claymont Mini Center, where I helped to secure partnerships to create a new adult basic education and GED program. During my tenure there, the center's adult ESL program more than doubled the number of students served. All of our K to twelve students and adult students were BSD residents, students, and former students. Equity in education is so important to me because I and many of today's students know what it's like to be excluded from what they are learning. I do not just talk about it. I have made it my life's mission, my mission. BSD students, if you are eighteen, live in BSD, and are a U.S. citizen, you too can vote for me. I am advocating for a student board member and a student advisory. And here's a secret, you are so much better than adults. We need you to step up and show adults how to be more inclusive and agents of change. As a two thousand and twenty one Delaware Teacher of the Year, I have a lot of ideas about how BSD can best recruit and retain our teachers in a district that values and encourages their teachers to grow. I invite you to read more on my website, kimstockteacher.com. I have six solutions outlined and sign up for a Zoom session. As a parent and teacher, I know we have never experienced a more difficult year. I intend to build bridges, stop the blame game, and give students, families, and teachers more of a voice as partners. I'd also like to thank Dr. Debbie Zarik for her service as a school board member. BSD colleagues and families, with your vote and support, I cannot wait to make a great district even better. The election is May eleventh, and I am asking you to vote for a teacher and mom. Kim Stock, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stock. Next up, Deb Scott.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Scott, and I'm a parent of three high school students in this building, actually. I'm here tonight because since hybrid started, the number of live teaching hours that my children receive has been greatly reduced, fifty percent reduced. My kids get four hours per day, times four days a week. That's sixteen, down from thirty, six hours a day, times five days a week. I'm sorry, but this is not acceptable. I know you're saying it's, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle of how to make this happen, but I'm requesting you look again, because this cannot continue. Why are Wednesdays asynchronous? I'm not asking that you move everyone to the building, but let our teachers teach our kids live on Wednesdays. It's a lost day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Gary Best.
Good evening. Actually, I wanted to tell the principals, two of them had left, and Keith, I see you sitting over there. I had a question about graduation information, and they presented that at the beginning of the meeting, which I thanked them and helped get clarification where we're going with that. The next item I was asked was about transportation for spring sports and where we stand. Fall sports, I know we had to have students drive all the way to Middletown themselves, and during the winter, students took the bus. Now we're back to spring sports, and they're telling them they need to drive again. I don't know where the liability falls with why it has to be on the parents for getting our making sure our students are there, and then they want to carpool. Some sports have two seniors, and they're they're not going to be responsible for taking other students. So I wanted to see where the district was in regards to the transportation. I heard the lady say for the leap, there's fine transportation. I want to know where we're at for spring sports. Purnit, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, we can follow up with them?
Yeah, we'll follow up with you, Mr. President.
Email's the best number here that you provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Joanna Steib.
Hello, how are you? My name is Joanna Steib. I am a proud parent of a two thousand and eighteen and a two thousand and twenty Concord High School graduate. I also have a junior at Concord High School. Three hundred and thirteen days, that's how long my daughter took, that she waited to walk through the doors to have in-person learning. Less than a month later, she's back home, learning behind a computer screen. You want to know why? Why did she choose to return to virtual learning after almost an entire year of wishing and praying for a return to school? The answer is the way in which in-person hybrid learning was. It's no different than her doing a virtual learning at home. She sat in a room with her earbuds in, watching her teacher on the computer screen while her teacher taught ten feet away at her desk. Sometimes she was the only person in that room learning. So there was no difference in her face-to-face learning than her learning from the comfort of our own home, and quite frankly, in our pajamas, which is what she decided to do. So when I think about our public school right now and what's happening, and I have friends that have kids that are at private and parochial, they've been back in school probably three to five days a week. So if I want to spend eleven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, I could send my child to Caravelle. Or fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, I could send my child to Padua. Or if I want five days of learning, I can send my child for twenty nine thousand seven hundred dollars to Archmere Academy. Where is the equity in this? We've got these kids that are private school kids. Their parents have the means to send their kids to school five days a week, maybe three, maybe four, but some of them are five days, and they're paying for that. How is this equitable? How are our students in public school systems getting an equitable education, learning at a computer screen? So I've heard a lot tonight about, you know, bringing the students back in for more learning, which I'm very grateful for, because that was another part of my comment. But we not only need to look at bringing them back in at more time and more time in school and in learning, we need to look at what that in-person learning looks like. Because sitting in class, and and Dr. Holder, you said tonight that you could take two of those kids out of the classroom if the classroom is over full now and stick them in another classroom. They're just virtually learning again. There's no difference than sitting at home. So you really, really, as a board, need to think about what that in-person classroom looks like and how you can make it so that the kids feel like they're in-person learning and not just looking at a computer screen again. So that's my plea to you as a board, as our superintendent, as our principals and our educators. I I can't imagine what you guys are doing, but you need to look at what the quality of the education looks like when they're in class. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stock. That concludes first public comment session. We will reopen that again at the beginning of new business. So if you're out there and you do wish to speak after new business, we do request that you sign up through the Zoom link on the district page or complete a card here in person. Moving on to board reports. Delaware School Boards Association Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman.
The DSBA met in the executive board on March third, and there was a discussion. Dr. Maranucci was going to send out information to all school board presidents across the state. And I want to just kind of address what we were told as board members to the comments that the lady just mentioned, and also to our superintendent. As a board, if we violate the governor's recommendations and the Department of Health's regulations, we open ourselves up to personal liability. Now, I can't speak for private schools. They're not subject to the same regulations and such that we are. But we're indemnified by the state in our position as long as we act in good faith. If we decide to say, well, let's go rogue. Let's open up five days a week. I'm putting seventy two kids on a bus. I don't care what the governor says. Kids are not really impacted. If the parents say it's okay, it's okay with me. My teachers are vaccinated, my staff is vaccinated, what, you know, what's the problem? Talk to the governor. When the Department of Public Health gives us guidance that we can do what you're talking about, I'm all for kids coming back to school. And and I think everybody knows that about me personally. I I want our children back in the buildings, but I don't want to put my staff at risk, whether it's the custodians, the bus drivers, or the teachers. That's why I'm really happy about educators getting vaccinated, and they should all be vaccinated if they want to be before we even think about five days a week. But those restrictions have to change. We can't run a district on twenty three kids on a bus. We can't run a district where we have to have kids sitting six feet apart at all times in classrooms. We just don't have the physical space. Now, I don't know what the private schools are doing. I haven't been to Archmere. I see the traffic in the morning. I live right near there. But, you know, it's it's different, and we have to be responsible to what the DPH regulations are. So I I just wanted to respond to that, because I I feel your pain. I really do. And I really would like to have our kids back five days. And I'm sure every board member here feels the same way. But until the governor changes his recommendations, he's the person you need to lobby at this point. That's a separate issue. Talk to the superintendent. I agree with you. But at the end of the day, to get us back into school, we need to get the state to say, we can do it. So that's that should be coming out, that guidance to all school board presidents, so that you are aware of it and aware of our indemnification situation in that regard. Because you never know when a school board might want to just say, hey, you know, we're gonna we're gonna get the kids back in the buildings. I'd love to do that. I think one one district downstate actually talked about that recently in a board meeting. But, you know, as board members, we just we just simply can't do that. The NSBA conference this year is one hundred percent virtual. I think everybody knows that. I don't know if anyone from our district has signed up for it. And that's about all. We had a forum at our meeting, and the next meeting will be for the folks in the Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Delaware School Boards Association Legislative Committee, Ms. Gordon.
Legislative Committee has not met since our last board meeting, and we will not be meeting until April twenty eighth. But obviously, the legislature legislature is meeting, and whatever bills come through, I'll be sending to board members via board docs.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gordon. District Finance Committee held its monthly meeting on Wednesday, March tenth. We reviewed the monthly financial report, all of which will be presented shortly by Dr. Hale. And we also touched on briefly on the Newcastle County Tax Amnesty Request, which Mr. Hale will cover as well. Our next meeting is scheduled for April fourteenth. Maintenance Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller.
Maintenance Advisory Committee met on March ninth at Springer. And we talked about a few things. There was a key hire in the Facilities Department to fill the vacancy for the Systems Controller, but there's going to be some significant retirements coming up this year that Mr. Reed is keeping an eye on. And then we talked about the State Auditor Kathleen McGinnis released the report that BSD received another perfect audit with no errors and in full compliance for our school construction projects for fiscal year ending June two thousand and nineteen. This included a review of hundreds and hundreds of documents, and Mr. Reed had directly attributed the success over the years of audits to Ms. Carol Riddle, who handles all of the construction paperwork and filings. And then we spent the majority of the meeting learning about the differences between ventilation and HVAC systems in our schools by touring Springer's ventilation equipment room on the roof. Two big takeaways that I had was that equipment room looked as clean as an operating suite. It was unbelievable how clean it was. And Mr. Skorbat was there, but definitely a testament to our incredible custodians and the detail that they put into their jobs. And then, of course, we've mentioned several times before that all of our buildings have exceeded the newest CDC guidelines on ventilation and clean air exchange long before COVID was a thing, which is a testament to Mr. Reed and the facilities team, and a thanks to our community, because all of that happened because of the community's approval of the several most recent referendums. The next meeting has not been scheduled yet due to spring break.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Parents Council for Students with Disabilities, Ms. Pigeon.
The Students with Disabilities Parent Council will meet on March seventeenth, six thirty on Zoom.
Thank you, Ms. Pigeon. Parents and Citizens Advisory Committee, Reverend Perry.
The Parent and Citizens Advisory Committee meets quarterly and has not met since our last meeting.
Hello, thank you, Reverend Perry. Health Advisory Committee, Dr. Zarek.
The Health Advisory Committee meeting met on February seventeenth. One of our committee goals has been to create a suicide prevention universal screening tool. Unfortunately, the state of Delaware has an Education and Prevention Subcommittee that's currently working to create a universal mental health screening tool for students aged ten to thirteen. David Perez, a psychologist from Brandywine High School, will be joining in the statewide committee as our liaison from Brandywine School District. Jim Donnelly, the health education teacher at Brandywine High School, has obtained the license for the district to show a forty-five minute documentary by Chris Heron. He's a previous NBA athlete who became addicted to drugs and is a motivational speaker who we were hoping to come in person, but because of COVID, we couldn't do that. Currently, all the tenth grade classes at Brandywine High School will be receiving this information via the documentary in their health class, and we're hoping to soon incorporate this into all health grade education. And moving forward, they would watch this documentary hopefully every year in tenth grade. Our committee also set up Annie Sliess from NAMI Delaware to present a program for all middle school and high school staff. The program was focused on recognizing the signs when a student is struggling with mental health concerns and gave them some resources to use if needed. The program also featured a young adult who shared her experiences with mental health and substance abuse and discussed the important ways that teachers and staff can make a difference in a student's life. These webinars have been very educational and well-received. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, May nineteenth.
Thank you, Dr. Zarek. Ninety-one point seven WMPH Advisor Committee met Monday, March eighth. Hybrid students are back working in singles and in pairs in the studio. The CTE teacher had entered ten new pieces in the Delaware Press Association High School Communicators Contest. We will look forward to the announcement of those awards. We've seen some success from students out of this program in the past. Currently, students are processing Brandywine School District's gratitude notes for on-air and web posting. And the superintendent's playlist show has now been renamed the BSD Playlist due to its popularity and interaction from staff members across the district. WMPH also continued to broadcast as normal through the time period with all FCC mandated compliances completed. Next meeting is scheduled for July, date to be determined. Any additional comments from the board or reports? And not to not to belabor the point from public comment, but that I just don't want the point missed that the, I guess, the question, and I've experienced this myself as a parent, the sterility of the in-person environment, the idea of having kids back in, I hope can be communicated through the buildings, that it's not the intent to do Zoom in the school building, but to be engaged and interactive with the students who are there, you know, as difficult as it may be, maintaining the Zoom piece and the live piece. You know, make sure that we have the tools in place to address that. Thank you.
I also want to ask that I know that we, I know that that's been, the students, particularly at the high school level, I I do miss their board reports. And I don't know if the Student Council students are meeting or not, but I would love to ask if we could have our student board reports come back to the board meetings. I'd like to hear their opinion and how things are going within the buildings.
I think that's reasonable. Thank you. Hearing nothing else, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A move?
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel matters. Do I have a motion to approve monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Same. Ms. Harris, go ahead. For personnel matters? All personnel matters as discussed.
A is the monthly report and B is?
Yes, but
Okay.
Monthly personnel matters as discussed, the report and matters as discussed
Okay.
In executive session. Ms. Harris, roll call.
Mr. Skrabat?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Pigeon?
Yeah.
Mr. Ackerman?
Reverend Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Dr. Zarek?
Abstain.
It's yes, one abstain.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Harris. There were no student matters. There is no old business, new business, Tobacco-Free Kids Campaign. Dr. Zarek, would you like to introduce that?
Yeah, thank you, President Skrabat. As many of you are aware, vaping amongst youth is a growing problem. Once these students start, the addiction starts as well. Here in Delaware, 80% of young people who have ever used tobacco started with the flavored nicotine product, which surged, surged when usage of e-cigarettes became the newest fad. Currently, 13.6% of Delaware students are vaping, which is three times the amount of adults who smoke. The tobacco companies are using their marketing tactics to attract new young smokers to these flavored products. They have also been aggressively targeting communities of color and the LGBTQ community. As we know, tobacco accounts for many health-related diseases, including heart disease, COPD, and lung cancer. Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, in association with the American Heart Association and the American Lung Association, have asked for the support of Brandywine School District to add their name to the growing list of organizations that support the banning of all flavored nicotine products in Delaware. I would like to propose that we vote as a board to support this campaign and to add our name to the long list of organizations that also support this initiative. So if appropriate, President Skrabat, can we vote today to add our name to this initiative or should we wait till next meeting?
We, we have a motion to lend our support from you. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on adding our name to the campaign to support a?
A ban on flavored nicotine?
Ban on, is there any legislation currently in process or is this?
There's no current legislation. They're hoping to bring it forward to have legislation. I think they wanted to have a bunch of organizations to back this before they bring it for legislation.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Zarek will count on you to communicate that with the organization to lend our support.
Great, I will. Thank you.
And just a reminder, comment is open for new business items and we will discuss that after new business. We will hear public comment, which leads us to Mr. Reed. Before tonight, we have a list of deed restrictions that have been presented to the Brandywine School District by Councilwoman Dee Durham and Council of Civic Organizations of Brandywine 100, which we will refer to through the meeting as CCOBH. Superintendent Holer and Mr. John Reed, our supervisor of facilities, will lead us through a PowerPoint here with the deed restrictions and some of their input onto some of the questions or concerns these requested items may present.
Thank you. To go through some history as to what got us here is the Brandywine Country Club was purchased by Louis Capano, and I may have the time wrong on this, but probably over five years ago. And the initial development showed a very high density on the property, which of course got civic groups concerned. And the civic groups, CCOBH, leading them, have worked with the Capano Organization to come up with something very agreeable to the public, which is the development pushed more towards the back of the shopping center. And the biggest sticking point was an access road between 202 and Shipley Road. So the deed restrictions document, the top of the document primarily deals with the Capano development and the 45 open acres, which is being proposed to be donated to the Brandywine School District, has not of yet. There have been some community proposed deed restrictions because their concern is, you know, a property going from a golf course to being developed. So the purpose of tonight is to go through these proposed deed restrictions. The district has been working with local civil engineers, architects, and the exec team and just our thoughts on it. Next slide.
Mr. Reed, if I could interrupt for one second. Do you, do you mind if the board kind of raises their questions as you go through slide by slide or would you like to go through and then answer them?
Whatever the board wishes. Interrupting or commenting during the presentation would be much easier because then we're on the point.
Right, thank you.
The first one is no more than 15 acres of the approved 45-acre donated development inclusive of structure. So in other words, we would only develop 15 acres. Next slide.
So that's the initial proposal.
Initial proposal. This slide here shows a zone where we did a setback from all our neighbors, put where we would build a structure. Going to the back of the parcel makes no sense at all because getting utilities there would be cumbersome. But when we talk about development, commercial developments being a school and residential developments go by district, different standards. The other thing about this is what I'm showing there is what 18 acres of impact would look like. No building's going to be 18 acres. That is not going to be fully paved and building. But when you build a building like a school, we look at a playground as being open space. Newcastle County looks at a playground as being impacted, developed space. The Newcastle County Code will ask us and require us to put green spots, green, greenage in our parking lots. That is part of the developed area. If the new school were to have a fenced-in outdoor play area, that could be considered developed property. Most people driving by it would see that as being open. So there's, there's some issues here where we need to work with our professionals on the definition of the space. The other thing is that large pond that you see there is, is a man-made structure. If you go through historical photographs, that used to have part of the golf course inside it, being some, something similar to an island green, that being so close to a school, as I said, we've not designed the school, we don't have the funding yet, but there may be a need to fill part of that or a good bit of it because having a school of this nature that close to a structure of water, yes, we could do fencing, yes, we could be doing other things, but that may get impacted. So I'm just bringing that up as a, as a possibility. Next slide.
And before you, before you turn that slide, so the purple outlined area, as you've indicated, that area is 18 acres?
That is, that is 18 acres. And, and somewhere in there that would be an appropriate location for the building. One of the things we really hear the neighbors on and we want to do right is getting cars bringing their children to the school off of Shipley Road. And the way to do that is to have a circuitous road that would let the car stock up on the property and then to the school. The school would most likely not be as close to Shipley Road as the current buildings. So something similar to a four wheeler and Lombardi. They're there, but you really don't see them from the street. There's a possibility that this school could be pushed back a little bit on the property, but we have walked the property. We've shown a sketch here. The areas in red are the areas that are closer to our neighbor. We are showing a very large setback from our neighbors and we're just showing there's no, no reason to go to the back of the property at all. Getting utilities there would be difficult. So we're just showing a region where the building could be. Next slide.
So Mr. Reed, are you saying essentially that we need more than 15 acres of developed space?
We haven't had the opportunity to design the building. These deed restrictions, we would like to have a negotiation with the group. As we go through all the deed restrictions, you'll see that we're more in agreement than we are at odds. There's two sticking points that we would like to discuss with them, but we are saying we would be more comfortable with more than 15 acres because this special needs school will be most likely a one-story building, maybe some mechanical space on the second story, but most likely one story. The hallways are used as therapy. We have learned at the Bush School, one of the, the main complaints from the Bush staff is the playground, that they need more outdoor space and they need that outdoor space contained because you worry about the kids and running and controlling them and the building containing that playground. So when you hear what's best for education, even though the building square footage isn't growing due to that, it's, it's, it's footprint may be a little odd. And if we had a playground that was contained on three sides, that playground is considered developed property. And I'm making up a number. Let's say the playground was an acre inside the building. That is considered developed space. That's not considered open space. You and I may look at this aerial photo and see it as being open. It's developed. And I, I included here that, that the term open space, when you go to follow your, your permit, open space is a term for residential developments. In schools, it's considered landscape surface ratio, which is a whole different calculation. So as we move forward with this, we want to make sure that we're using terms that will be in line with the Newcastle County Development Code. Next slide. We're proposing 20, but we want to get back and really look at this. And I want to be clear, that is not 20 acres of paved area. The, the building is not growing. We are talking about a 70 to 72,000 square foot building. The playgrounds themselves are considered developed. The parking lots will have green space in them because we want to build to the proper codes. That green space is not considered open. And any type of drainage structures, we'll have to go through it as to whether or not those structures are considered developed space because we're going to be out there moving dirt. But when it's all done, yes, it'll be green, but the, the codes at which we're held to and the codes at which residential developments are held to are slightly different. But we would like the opportunity to discuss that with them. Next slide. Initially, and I think we've had some meetings and I think there's been some good progress on this, there was a feeling from the group that 30,000 square foot was an acceptable structure. Next slide. The current bush inside the Hamby building's 30,000 square foot. The previous bush was 19,000 square foot. We have had meetings, meetings have gone well, where we've explained that the current programs are half-day programs, we're looking for full-day programs, and we're also looking to, to bring in kids that we are right now turning away. So I think that this is something we can discuss. Next slide addresses this. We're saying the building's going to be 72,000 square foot. Now, they say in this deed restriction, the maximum square footage of buildings, plural. We just want to be clear that there may be, if we're going to maintain 45 acres and have lawn mowers, we don't want to park them in the elementary school. So we are proposing a small structure that would keep lawn equipment. That's not where people show up to work every day. That's lawn equipment in a structure. And if possibly in the future, a bathroom facility for, so people aren't having to come into the school to use the, any type of public amenities there. So we just want to be clear, when you see the S after buildings, yes, the school will not get larger, but we are just concerned that, you know, other smaller structures, which we haven't designed, we don't know the square footage, no, they will not be huge buildings, but we want to make sure that somehow we agree to language that doesn't prohibit those things from happening. Next slide. From here on out, it's easier. This deed restriction speaks to the height of the building and hiding mechanical structures, such as any mechanical units that you see on the roof, which is typical on schools. We, as a district, have done a good job to hide them, but it sometimes happens. And this says that basically the building would not exceed one story exclusive of roof lines. And they want architectural barriers to hiding the type of mechanical equipment. The next slide speaks to this. I show there the, the elevation of Hamby. There may be, even though it is clear that a preschool has to be one story, there, if we can put any elements such as administration, such as storage, the one thing with Bush, I've learned the hard way, that these teachers have lots of equipment for the students. They have lots of furniture. There's need to put things away. It's possible that storage could be on a dumb waiter on the second floor that reduces the footprint of the building. But one thing people don't think about with schools is we have to have a lot of ductwork to deliver the fresh air. Hamby's top of second floor is 27 feet, seven inches. The mechanical space being the attic is by Newcastle County counted as a story. Even though no one goes up there, it is counted as a story. Even though you go by Hamby and it doesn't look tall, it's three stories because we're hiding the mechanical equipment. So I think maybe the best way to alleviate any community concerns on this and instead of sticking with a, a statement on how many stories it is, maybe we can stick with a statement on the top of the height, as I put here, 27 feet, seven inches to the top of second floor. Because if you look at similar houses around us, they're two stories with attics. As I said, we're going to be pulling this building back from the road. We're going to be away from the neighbors, which minimizes any impact. I totally get what they're going for. No one wants another Burnett. We don't want another Burnett. But you don't want something that looks inappropriate to the development. We purposely designed Hamby knowing we would have neighbors with the tall portion of Hamby being in the back to not just distract from the community. So I understand what they're going from. I think we can come to terms with some language that will work for both parties. Next slide. This was a short one. It says, "Any building shall be LEED certified." I just wanted to include that Jack Markell Executive Order 18 requires all state agencies to bill to LEED standards. LEED standards, not LEED certified. Deed restrictions for certification may be costly. The Brandywine School District, wherever possible, builds to LEED standards. And we actually go for the LEED certification. If you look on the U.S. Green Building Council's website, you will see, you know, you will see that we're the only ones that have received that certification. We will bill to LEED standards. I think the word certification, actually getting the paperwork. If we get into any budget concerns or budget issues, getting that certificate sometimes costs extra money. And we should be putting all our money into education. So since the governor has a similar requirement, I don't know if this is something that we can talk to the group and either not have in it or if we could change the word certified to LEED standards. We're required to do so anyways. Next slide. The 30 acres, they want to keep at least half of the, the 30 acres of undeveloped property as preserved, as passive open space. We would just need to adjust the acreages there depending on the terms that we come to as to how much will be developed. And so those two will go hand in hand.
So Mr. Reed, just kind of on this point here, so, and I guess for anyone that, that's listening out there to us, this is a unique situation in a sense that we have a developer who wants to donate land, we have a district who's willing to receive it, but we're being asked to negotiate with a third party. And how does the determination of open space, how does that fit under current county guidelines as to a requirement for open space? If you had a parcel of 45 acres, what would be a county requirement for open space?
If, if it was just the Brandywine School District, working with the Newcastle County, at least, at least half of it would be open space, at least half. But the way I think we also need to look at this is, right now, it's all one big parcel that includes a lot of homes. And I think this is being looked at is that, you know, they want as much open space as possible. And I think we are all going for the same goal. It's the semantics when we get into the way school development is held to certain standards and what is considered developed and open space. And unfortunately, we do not hire an architect until we receive And unfortunately, we do not hire an architect until we receive funding, which is part of our certificate necessity. When we get down this path, I have been here eighteen years. We always work with our community and our neighbors. When we tore down Burnett, how many feet from our neighbors? When we renovated PS, when we built Hamby, when we built Lancashire, um, we will absolutely work with our community. I just think that right now, that this has been going on for some time. And I think the quicker we can get to a resolution on this, the quicker the developer can get his permit, and the quicker the gift will happen. So I think as we go on from this point on, you'll see that there's a lot of agreement.
And and does the county make the distinction between passive open space and active open space in their current requirements?
I don't know the exact answer to that. I know a golf course is more active open space. But when you look at buffer zones, and you add all that up, passive open space adds up very quickly. And if you take a perimeter around the property that we're considering to keep, we want to buffer from our neighbors because you don't want to get complaints from the neighbors, um, about, you know, hearing kids on the playground or or whatever. But passive open space adds up very, very quickly. Um, so I think by the time it's all said and done, we're going to be there anyways. We're going to be at a fifty-fifty. Next slide.
So Mr. Reed, before you, so.
Yes.
Is is your interpretation of this request, would this request prevent us from i- in the future adding sports fields for the kids of the community through this request?
I I do not think it would. I I I don't think it would. Now, I I do need some more time with the civil engineers and others. But I did forward this request to our engineers and our consultants. And their response to me was, John, you're going to get there anyways. Is is it's the way things are added up and the way that you add up property. It's amazing how much buffer zones, when you go around a site of this size. The buffer zones by Newcastle County, which will come up here in a couple slides, the true buffer zones by how far we need to stay away from the property line is fifteen feet. We would never do that. We're proposing something far greater. And those buffer zones add up very quickly. On the very first slide where you showed, I showed those red areas where the tennis courts are, and along the other homes on the other side of the pond, there is a lot of acreage there that you would never fit an athletic field in. You would never fit a baseball field. It, there is a lot of property here due to the ponds, due to the the t- topography. I'm, I have problems with that word, wearing a mask. But the passive open space is going to add up very quickly. Next slide. All, um, active passive open space shall be closed dawn to dusk. Reasonable request, that's the rules at our schools right now. Next. There shall be no lighted fields to enable after-dark activities on the property. Lights are expensive, and it'd be very difficult to meet Newcastle County code on this property. Um, getting light permits is a lot of work, and lights are expensive. So I think that this is, in my opinion, a reasonable request. Uh, next. Uh, the property shall be, uh, accessed by vehicles solely from Shipley Road. Reasonable request.
John, how would that, I guess, if the county, if if the county deemed that there needed to be, whether fire trucks, police vehicles, if there needed to be, uh, a second egress somehow, how does that interfere with or? I'm I'm trying to think in terms of, a couple of years ago, there was apartment complex that a bridge washed out or something, and they couldn't get fire trucks in or out because there was only one ingress or egress. If we're, we don't want any kind of traffic, there's no connecting road. But how would a deed restriction like this? I I guess maybe it's something to discuss that separate of an emergency-only egress determined as needed by the county, or, you know, emergency.
I think we have drawn school plans before where we have shown emergency access, which is done by impervious or pervious blocks. You see them all throughout, um, you know, Arden, where you see these blocks that are put down. I could see, and I don't speak for Tally Fire, I haven't talked to them, but I could see where they would say, listen, guys, we want access through here. And that's something we would have to work with a developer on. And that would be normal to have a secondary emergency access. I think if that happens, it's not only going to impact us, but it's going to impact the development next door. I see this vehicle access solely from Shipley Road. I mean, if a statement would's, would be, normal everyday vehicle traffic solely by Shipley Road, I think that that's a reasonable request. And I think if we had to add language, that if required to have an emergency access through the development, I think that that's something we could talk to CCOBH about. But it still meets their intent, that it would be for emergency purposes only. So far, that has not been a request.
John, is that, is that something the landowner usually decides on? Or is that something that's usually decided by Del Dot?
That's something that's decided by the emergency response. Uh, and Capano's variance permit. He, um, once you get above three hundred units, you need a second access. So for him to get his variance, he's going to make a request, um, to waive that requirement for the second emergency access. So that's going to be happening through his permit process.
So I guess my concern would just be to make sure that as this can, as this discussion continues, that we're protected as a district, that any requirements, w- we can't agree to any terms that would be contradictory to state and county requirements.
Correct. I, and I think that this would be one that we could, we would have to work, I mean, us getting permits for this property and other things are more than a year off. Um, but examples would be, a lot of our older buildings, such as a Springer, only has access from Shipley Road for emergency on all vehicular access, and it's a much bigger school. So I would think that, you're correct, we shouldn't be bound in in case it's required. But I think if that would happen, we could possibly add something here that, that if it's required, that 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 could be looked at. But that would be for emergency only, not for normal usage. The the community's main concern was the access from two oh two to Shipley. And as long as that, there is no normal.
Normal, everyday use.
Normal, everyday. I think we will be able to meet the requirements. Uh, next slide. Uh, the property shall have no more than two curb cuts onto Shipley Road. Um, that would, would be our requirement, but we're going to work with Del Dot on all access to Shipley Road. And I put the word may be in need for a dedicated bus lane. We have at some of our schools, a way for the buses to circumvent parents leaving with their cars, and it's done for safety reasons only. So the reason I say that there may be a need for dedicated bus lane, that would only be done to improve safety for people in the community and the school. So, but then again, when it comes to the curb cuts, that is something we will be working with Del Dot on. Next slide. Uh, both developed and undeveloped portions of the property shall share the use of the roads. This is one that we may need some clarification on, um, as to what is the definition of developed and undeveloped. I think what they're asking here is that if there are any playfields, that there won't be separate roads for those in the school. Uh, roads are expensive. And I, and then when they say roads, I'm assuming that they're saying paved roads on the property. Uh, it would be our intent that that the fields would not be used while the school's in session. Um, that's the way most of our schools work. And any type of road that goes towards, a little bit towards the back of the property around to cue parents up, those would be the roads that would be used for the fields. So I think on this one, we're just going to be asking the folks that wrote this, uh, language to clarify it a little bit more. But if they're asking whether or not there'd only be one set to, set of roads on the property, the answer would be yes. Uh, number eleven. Uh, there shall be enhanced landscaping buffers consistent with Newcastle County code on all edges bordering the neighbors' homes to protect and enhance current neighbors' views. Sheds which enhance landscaping buffer zone to be maintained by the property owner. Um, just needed to find the word enhanced. Enhanced could mean additional landscaping. To me, enhanced, if the Newcastle County code is a fifteen-foot buffer, and we're absolutely looking to do more than that, that's in in enhanced. But, um, you see there, it says consistent with Newcastle County code. That's absolutely what we're, um, going to do. We're going to follow the code, and we're going to do this right. So there's, there's no real issue here. Uh, twelve. Other than, uh, the use needed for education proposed, the property may not be used for residential commercial development. If the property either wholly or or portions thereof is, uh, sold, conveyed, transferred, or encumbered in any manner, the entire property will become subject to immediate deed restrictions, requiring that of the entire possibility designated as preserved, open space, and used as pa- passive parkland. Uh, next slide, I think.
So before we go off that one.
Yes.
So so what does that mean? Like, at whose expense? If this is, I guess if it's sold or conveyed or transferred, and it's no longer ours, but then, i- if if it.
Well, I think.
Transfers to someone else, like, is there any financial component to that that?
I, the Brandywine School District can't sell its property.
Right.
It's to be, if we deem a piece of property to be, what's the word I'm looking for? Surplus. It goes to the state first, and to the county, and to any other local agency that would want to use it. I think what they're looking for here, and I think the next slide may answer it, is we live with this same requirement on several of our properties right now. The, um, properties on two oh two, being the old Bush School, and the, uh, Brandywine Operations Center, and Darley Road, have deeds that date back to the fifties that I think speak to this much clearer, um, but it's just language. Basically, it says, "A land, uh, here conveyed shall be only used for school person, purposes by the Alfred I Dupont School District," or, uh, successor districts, being us. And in the event that the land here in conveyed ever ceases to be used for school purposes, it shall be used as public park or recreational purposes. So basically, the community just wants assurance that they're not going to drive by and see a Walgreens there. And I think that that is, um, you know, an acceptable request, and it's something we live with right now. Um, you know, hopefully Bush will be there for well over a hundred years and providing excellent education, and we don't need to worry about this one. Uh, so this is something we live with now. Uh, next slide. Uh, "Any proposed permit development on the donated land shall require a traffic impact study, or the equivalent, to assess such development's impact on local roads and transportation." I just make a statement here that I I hope it's understood that if we pull a permit for an improvement that could be non-traffic related. We pull permits all the time to replace a roof, to replace a chiller. If I pull a separate permit, like, one of the first permits, like, if this happens, when this happens, the very first thing I'm going to need to do is cut grass out there before the school's built. I'm going to have to be, pull a permit to put a small building there to store lawn equipment. That building for lawn equipment doesn't impact traffic. So I just wouldn't want to make the statement that this, any of this language should be in accordance with Del Dot Newcastle County regulations. If there's a permit that doesn't impact traffic, it doesn't require a study. So I just want to be clear, when we go to build a school, there will absolutely be a traffic study. If we were to do anything that would bring people to the property, being fields, that would require a traffic study. Me replacing a chiller or building a storage unit does not require a traffic study, yes.
So I just want to correct something that was, um, I think one of the public comment had made with regards to the number of people, that the potential for a five-hundred student building would, the traffic that that would bring. I, just for clarification, our current Bush program is three or two days a week. So it may be five hundred students for a full day. But I don't know that that's five hundred students, five days a week, all at one time. So it might only be two hundred and fifty students per day coming to the building, correct?
Yes, and also that the times that when we start are different than our other schools. It's, it has a later start. Uh, we will not be impacting the rush hour traffic. And, you know, I don't want to speak for Lisa, who's sitting ten feet from me, but there may still be some half-day programs. There'll be some more full-day programs. But to compare what's going to happen at this school to any of our other traffic studies or buildings, this is a different animal. And instead of waiting for the time when we would have to do a traffic study, I'm proposing to do one sooner than later, so we can alleviate concerns. But the truth is, is that these cars are in this neighborhood now. Bush is right around the corner now. And if this school isn't built on this land, it would be built in Brandywood, which is just, you know, a golf shot away. So, um.
And it it could, uh, Ms. Pitchen, have more than two hundred and fifty kids a day. Uh, as we look at that full-day, uh, three and four-year-old programs, and then the birth-to-three program, uh, servicing those kids up to six hours a day. It has the potential to be, uh, it could be a five-hundred-student building. Is that correct, Dr. Lawson?
She's nodding yes. Uh, next slide.
But we would have to do a traffic study.
Correct.
Going back.
Absolutely.
The public comment statement.
So w- we're agreeing with this comment here. We just want to be clear that there are things that clearly don't impact traffic, and hopefully we wouldn't be required to do it, um, a study for that. And then the last one here, "The community agent shall have the right to enforce these restrictions, and shall be entitled, from the property owner, to the fees, costs, and expenses, including attorney fees for taking any enforcement action that the court does not, uh, conclude as frivolous." Um, as I said, this whole, uh, comment, this whole, um, relationship between the developer and CCOBH precedes the Brandywine School District getting involved. Uh, the fact that CCOBH is the third-party agent in this is, um, something that the developer has agreed to. Um, because the most important part about getting a development done is community buy-in. And the the development of that site is taken five years to get community buy-in. We're coming in at the tail end of this. So this is part of the the restrictions. This is part of the whole, um, thing that we're talking about. And, you know, whether there are notes on the plan, whether there are deed restriction on the deed, or whether there's a third party, at the end of the day, to us developing this, um, I don't see it as an, as an issue. And the purpose of making this presentation is, we would like to get to resolution with the community groups as soon as possible. I think what we're, what, not think, what we're here asking the board to do is for superintendent and his designees to work with CCOBH, to come to resolution on these, and then bring this back to the board for final approval.
Mr. Reed, could you, uh, could you explain the difference between a deed restriction? Because this would be with a third-party.
Correct.
CCOBH versus, um, putting some of these pieces in on what they call the the plans and notes on the council's plans that are submitted and approved. What, can you explain the difference between the two?
If if the district wanted to do anything on our properties on two oh two, they would clearly see those deed restrictions and the notes on the plans that date back to the fifties. And we would be held to those standards.
By?
By the county.
By the county. So when they're submitted on the plans, written on the plans, the ruling body, the, let's say, enforcing body, or the body you have to go to if you want or seek the need to, uh, do something that is contrary to the notes on the plan, you must petition the county council.
Correct.
And they'll have a hearing, a public hearing?
Correct.
And invite community members, district, and they are the presiding body who will listen and either approve or disapprove the request to have a variance against the the comments on the plans.
Correct. But I think what makes this situation different? If this were the property at Tally, or any of the other properties we have owned, we have historically been there. The fact that that there's a developer who has reached an agreement with a community group as to this is the way he, the only way his development's going to move forward is with community support. community support. And this mechanism is the way that it's felt for him to get the community support and the community behind it. The fact that we are being gifted the property and we are a piece of this, I think what we have to be careful of is looking at this as just the 45 acres. We have to look at this as a 45 acres plus the development. And I apologize, I don't have the acreage of the size of his development, actually. My glasses, I can probably read it, but I think that's what's making this a little different. And I think at the end of the day, other than the restriction of the size of the building and other than the exact numbers of acres developed, everything else that we talked about here were discussions of semantics.
So can I just add?
Yes.
A question again. So, Mr. Reed, how many other properties does the district own where there's a third-party deed restriction versus notes on the plan that might be restrictive?
To my knowledge, none.
So this would be a precedent-setting move?
Correct.
Could the same agreements be in effect by agreement around putting notes on a plan versus a deed restriction held by a third-party other than the county?
In my opinion, it could, but I think in this situation, if the developer doesn't get his permits and his variance for his development, then this whole thing falls apart. And my, I'm just speaking for me, I'm just one guy. I think that once we go through those two sticking points, I think that this is something where we can work with the community groups, get through this, assist the developer getting to his variance, which he needs for this to move forward, get this deal done, and get our CN approved and get a school built. And I just think that the quicker we can do this, I'm not seeing anything here that's going to be a real problem in the foreseeable future.
So I guess, Mr. President, I, members of the board, the way I'm hearing it, it comes down to, there are pieces that we believe we could live with, there are things that we believe need to be changed, just in their basic proposal, but part of the question comes into, then how is that recorded? Is it recorded through a third-party deed restriction with CCOBH holding it, something we don't have on any of our other properties? Or is it handled through recording it on the plan as it's approved by council, similar to other properties that we hold that have comments on the plans? And the presiding body that would oversee that would be county council.
Right. I think what's, was very peculiar and unconventional for this whole situation is, you know, having members of the community be part of CCOBH, part of Cars, and also taxpayers in our community, we as a board and a district have to answer to them, make sure that we're, you know, being financially responsible with our assets, including property. And, you know, boards change over time, CCOBH changes over time, community interest and needs change over time, and I'm concerned that locking into, and I guess as presented and things will be discussed and changed, my concern is I don't want to get locked into something that we can't, you know, even if the community wanted to, change in the future and we had community support and community buy-in, that we'd be bound to not use the property as it's needed to be used. So I know there's the two, you know, two points, and maybe some of what you've presented tonight will give them better understanding of, you know, a lot of this, it seems to me, is already included in existing county code and Del Dot and state regulations. So if that's addressed, can we then, you know, focus on other items on this list?
Yeah, I mean, some of the notes, if it makes people, you know, more comfortable to have them in there, and we have to do it anyways, I mean, I think people would be shocked if they heard how much we go through as far as permits and how much are public hearings and how much to get from here and ribbon-cutting on a school. There are so many steps, but I think we have to look at this one different, that whether, when it's all said and done, we may not see ourselves connected, but right now, as far as a parcel, right now, as far as a document, we are connected to the Capano development, and this thing doesn't happen if he doesn't make this gift. And this gift is an amazing gift, because trying to make this school fit on our smaller parcels, we will have to make compromises that, in my opinion, will impact education. Sure, I can fit this 70,000-square-foot building on the Brandywood property, and we would have to get variances, but we wouldn't have the playground that would meet the students' needs. We would be very close to neighbors. We would have traffic issues. I just think.
You're talking if we did it on another property?
If we did it on another property.
Right.
I just think at the end of the day, the best thing for our kids and the best thing for our community is if we can sit down with them, come to terms with this quickly, help Capano get to his, to his variance hearings, help him through the process, and get this done.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, can I, so, you know, I think as a board, right, our primary responsibility is to the community to provide the best education, and I hope that as we continue to talk, that that's the only filter that any considerations made through. So I agree, the majority of these restrictions are common sense, and probably we would do most of them anyway, restrictions or not. So my concern, kind of like you said, John, if there's any restrictions that would in any way impact the needs to educate our students now or in the future, or raise the cost to do what we were going to do anyway unnecessarily with no benefit to education. So I think we need to look out for the future boards and make sure that whatever we agree to won't impact the future needs of the kids or make it cost more to provide those needs to those kids. And then, as a secondary thought, a credit to you and your team, I mean, all of our buildings are unbelievably well-maintained and beautiful and look very nice in their surrounding communities, and there would be no reason to think that this won't be the same thing and that we wouldn't put a building there that, you know, increases the value of the area that it's in and blends in and looks, and looks very nice. So I think, so I just hope we take all future discussions with that filter, that any restrictions don't impact our primary need to educate the kids.
And that's why I made the comment on the LEED certification. LEED certification's a great, wonderful thing, and getting an award and a trophy and a plaque is a wonderful thing. But when we were doing PS DuPont and we wanted to get that certificate, we were tight on money. So we had to make a decision, are we going to buy furniture for the classrooms, or are we going to chase a certificate? We bought furniture for the classrooms. Now, since then, we've become smarter, and we're doing that paperwork in-house, and that paperwork has been done by community volunteers such as Herb Duffield and others. So we're able to deliver, and we received a grant from Denrec on Hambi, which people may not remember, but we received a grant of $950,000 to do a LEED building. So that would be wonderful, but to your point, if we just put in there, it'd be built to LEED standards, we can meet your requirement of delivering education first. Thank you.
John, I have a question about the third-to-last bullet point. I don't know what it is. So it has a definition, it's the definition, or it says if the property either wholly or any portion thereof is sold, conveyed, transferred, or encumbered. I would like to know the definition of encumbered.
My guess is, I'm not an attorney, leased, we have several leases of properties where we have different groups that are leasing long-term facilities use. I think that this requirement, they just don't want to see homes and they don't want to see commercial development there. And, you know, agreed.
Just, I guess, just as long as that means, does it mean that we can't, if we have a need for use, like Jason said, in the future, that we can't, 30 years down the road, that the board and the district can't, you know, have another program or if that's a need? Or even, you know, we have lots of property that is leased to other organizations like Tallyville, Conference Soccer, those kinds of things. You know, if there was a community need for that.
Yep, but see, up top, the very first line, that this property would be used for educational purposes. Anything that the Brandywine School District needs is an educational purpose. So I don't see this as an issue. Now, our site program does have a retail facility. That's right now at the Claymont Community Center. I've thought through everything that could happen. I don't think that that's a good fit on this parcel, so I don't see this as a problem.
Well, and we would have to get our legal counsel to review all the terminology to make sure everything's square and there's no questions or ambiguity.
Yes, correct.
Around encumbered. We need to know exactly what that means, so I'm in full agreement, Ms. Pitchen.
So I guess before we take any action on this matter, I'd kind of like to hear the second public comment. Mr. Ackerman, maybe you can help me with protocol here. Do we need to have a motion to defer, or can we just hear any motions and vote on this item after public comment?
We can listen to public comment first. I mean, is this an action item on the agenda?
Well, I guess, before we hear any motions, if there are any. I have a motion that I would like to make, but I'd like to make it after public comment.
I think you can revisit after public comment.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Reed?
No.
All right, we may call you back. Tax amnesty, Dr. Hale.
All right, very quickly, on the tax amnesty program, Newcastle County is proposing to do a amnesty program similar to what they've done back in 2012 and 2015. And what this program would do would be to allow for the waiving of penalties for any residential taxpayer who has back taxes if they pay in full. So essentially, this has been done two other times. The last time, the impact on the Brandywine District was that we received roughly $80,600 in back taxes. Now, that was as the result of waiving nearly $23,000, but this program in total for Newcastle County brought in almost $600,000 back in 2015. So this is a program that they're looking to do again, and the four Newcastle County districts, actually, really the five Newcastle County districts, have all agreed to bring this to the board just for conversation, just to seek the support of the boards. And just wanted to bring this to you and see if there was any questions or anything. I know I've prepared some information for one of the Friday packets, and wanted to just give an opportunity if there were any questions.
So essentially, this is found money that would probably no otherwise be paid unless they got the amnesty on the penalties.
Yes, and this would not be one of those items that would be impacted by that collection process that has happened before, where there would be fees. This would be anybody that pays, they have to pay in full, only residential, no commercial properties. And that was something that was very important as we had the conversation with the county.
Do I have a motion from the board, and we are, you're looking for, your recommendation is to participate in this?
Just for your support as a board, that would be great, thank you.
Do we have a motion to support the tax amnesty with Newcastle County?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Don't go far, Dr. Hale, monthly financial report.
Sharing the screen very quickly. Yes, so the information that's presented on the screen for you today is the information for the monthly report ended February 28th. We reported this information to the District Finance Committee last week. They're recommending this to be brought to the board. I'm going to try to make that larger. So state revenues really are the same as they were last month, and, you know, over the course of the next several months, we will see that number come up, but we're currently at about 89%. Happy to say that on the local tax side, we're almost 99% through February, so I feel very good that we're going to be over 100% of our projected revenues. You know, we're about $200,000 higher at this point as compared to last year at the end of February. All of our federal programs have been received, and we are certainly in the process of spending those out. The expense report, you can see that all the areas, and I've mentioned each month that the principals are doing a fabulous job, as well as all of the other division directors with their budgets, keeping very close eyes. We get towards the end of the year. I know that there has been a number of questions as relates to like PPE and other things as it relates to our CARES funding, and that's something that, over the course of the next several months, we'll have more information as relates to some of the stimulus packages and the ESR, the grant application that'll be coming forward. But as we look at the information on the budget here, the operating side, everything is in very good shape. We're on a trend to have some lower-than-anticipated expenditures, which is always a good thing. You can see here on the second page, we are trending below our budget on our Division III and local salaries. And again, that's something that will, as we get into the cash flow, you'll see that that's also impacted what our carry-forward balance will be. The prior year, the prior-year appropriation expenditure report, again, is the report that shows all of the expenditures made from funds prior to fiscal year 2021. And then lastly, we have our cash flow statement. And the cash flow statement, as we've talked about over the last several months, as we analyze the revenues and expenditures coming in, you can see that the carry-forward balance for June 30, 21, I've increased that to an anticipated number of about 11.7 million. So over the course of the next couple months, as we see how that trend in expenditures are coming in, I would anticipate that number going slightly higher again, which is certainly, that's a favorable position for us as it relates to when we would anticipate going to referendum next. Are there any questions on the report?
With that, I'll take a motion to accept the monthly financial report, subject to audit.
Same move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please dismiss tariffs. Mr. Miles still out there for second public comment? And do we have any additional?
Yes, he is, and no additional.
Mr. Miles, when you see the clock, time is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, John. That was an excellent report. You really dove deep. I think you've laid the groundwork for what we left our last working group meeting, and that is to plan to have a second working group meeting dedicated to coming to consensus on the deed restrictions. And I would reach out to superintendent to see what schedule would best work for you and what size group. I know that we've worked with Lewis in smaller groups and then reported back to the larger group. So certainly, if you have a preference, as Mark had suggested, that we get together with a smaller group of key Cars folks, CCOBH folks, Lewis's folks, your group, we're ready to schedule that board meeting or that working group meeting at your earliest convenience. I'd welcome any questions. Let me say thank you to Councilwoman Durham. I know that it's been a long process working with Lewis, and from where we started, we never thought we'd have this much.
And from where we started, we never thought we'd have this much land to be able to set aside for, for public use. And we're excited for the opportunity and look forward to working with the district going forward. And I, I welcome any questions that you might have.
Yeah, no, Mr. Miles, I don't think the, this is the time for questions back and forth. I might think we'll, we'll, we'll follow up with you in the, in the smaller working group. And if no other comments, we will return, so to the item of new business. Oh, actually, wait a minute. Uh, Ms. Harris, I think we had, uh, two additional Zooms maybe is, see Chris Ver, Ver out there? Or Colin Carter?
Those are raised hands. They didn't submit a public comment.
Yeah, let this, go ahead and let him in. Do we have the ability to do that, Ms. Harris?
She's muted now.
All right, so I, I'd like to, based on the recommendation, John Reed and Superintendent Holder, I'd like to make the recommendation that we advise them to continue the discussions with CCOBH, Councilwoman Dee Durham, to revisit the items on the list based on the information that we've presented this evening. And I guess return with, with a revised list. Do I have this?
So we're, we're happy to do that. There was discussion of a public type forum. And I take it we would want to have those meetings, kind of talk through the items that we talked through tonight and come back to you with some kind of revised list prior to that, uh, more open forum. Is that the goal?
So I guess, I guess that's the question. Do we, do we continue the conversation, get a revised list and then have a quote unquote town hall, more public meeting? Or do we have the public meeting and use that in developing the further items?
I think you have to come back and, and actually come back with something where we're in sync with CCOBH. I mean, it sounds like we're close according to Mr. Reed. But I'd like to rather, I would rather see that we're presenting a, a united front on what we're recommending to the public. So I would, I would go with your recommendation or if that was a motion.
Yeah, the, the motion is to advise Mr. Holder, Mr. Reed to revisit CCOBH, you know, rework these proposed restrictions based on the information that has been shared tonight. What is within our capacity, what is not within our capacity? What is reasonable, what is not reasonable and return and return it to the board. And return it to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would second that motion.
The motion and a second, any discussion? I have some discussions.
So your preference would be to bring something back prior to next, next board meeting. Next board meeting is April 19th.
Yeah, I mean, if we can get some information back and have a framework, have an opportunity to share it with the community, that we can make a final decision at next month's board meeting, that would be ideal. And I guess in, in part of, you know, we have a motion, we have a second. And part of the discussion would be to, you know, include that, how, how does this language differ? As you, as you and Mr. Reed are working with them, how does this language differ than the existing deed restrictions that we have on Darley Road, on the Bach property? And, you know, does that language encompass everything that we need to? You know, what are the items that get added on? How is it different having deed restrictions held by a third party as opposed to deed restrictions held by the county or enforced by the county? You know, in, in your conversations, I just, I, I don't want to make sure that someone's constantly standing over our shoulder, waiting for us to, you know, make a misstep that they can, you know.
Yeah, and we, yeah, it would be nice to have things that are, uh, consistent.
Right?
Right. From the, the district's point of view. So I, I will, uh, reach out to RJ. We've exchanged emails a couple of times here lately. And, uh, representing the district, definitely John Reed, Alex, Dr. Lawson to join that group as well as Dr. Hale.
Um, I'm not necessarily sure that I want to wait on community feedback, only because it seems that, that there has been some community feedback, um, already. And so just to make sure that it's equitable across the board, I think that even as we continue with the negotiations, that we need to make sure that all sides have an opportunity to express their input or to provide their input.
But I guess wouldn't community input help that?
Yeah, so my, I, I think that's my point. So why, why are we waiting to get community input?
I guess, I guess because the framework that as presented is not something, I guess we need a, a more revised draft of what we're actually presenting and asking to the community. Cause part of going to the community is, in my concern, is there, is there any, I guess the concerns of having a third party hold these deed restrictions, does that, you know, put us at risk for any future acquisitions that we want to make of having a third party step in? And, you know, make requests or demands on another transaction. I think it, it's a slippery slope is why I want, I want, you know, Mr. Holder, Mr. Reed to kind of pursue the idea that how is this different or what, what protections is CCOBH and Councilwoman Durham looking for that aren't provided in general deed restrictions recorded and administered by the county? Some of the language in the last one, you know, community agents have a right to enforce, like, I don't really understand what all that means if, you know.
So we're, we're basically going back, refining, asking some questions, trying to get closer in agreement before we go and take it to the community for a broader, uh, view and community input.
Right, act like active passive open space shall be closed dusk till dawn. Like, okay, if that's in conjunction with where our property is used now, how does that? I don't understand, how does that affect if we have an open house at night? Is that the school building separate from the active space? Like, I guess there's just, I think it seems like this is a very complicated request when it can all be settled by general county deed restrictions. And I feel like having the third party complicates the matter. And I want to make sure that we're getting information to the public and from the public beyond just CCOBH and the Cars Group. Cause we do have a broader school district base that, you know, is going to use this property is, you know, tax dollars are being used. It's not just the immediate neighbors. And I would, you know, ask the community members that are, you know, still hanging in there, listening with us. You know, I, I feel like we have a history of being good neighbors, good stewards of the tax dollar. John Reed has done a phenomenal job with our properties right around. Look how we maintain. You know, don't listen to what we say, look at what we do. Look at how our properties are used and how nice we maintain them. And that's what we want to do for this property. And I think a lot of what we're already doing should, should be sufficient to ease the concerns of, of the neighbors. And everything else is, is covered by the, uh, you know, county and state requirements as they are. So keep that in mind as you're, you know, continuing in these discussions. And, and it's, you know, maybe it's the term negotiation that I'm getting stuck on with the fact that, you know, we're being asked to negotiate with the person that's not donating the land. It's all intertwined and it's just, my concerns are that we don't have that with any other properties. And what, what that would do for the future of, of the district business.
Then I would ask, because it does seem as if some community members are already providing input. So I would ask on both sides that if we're going to say that we're going to hold off to, um, present this to the community, then I think both sides needs to, uh, make that commitment.
I think I lost my feed here. Lost my Zoom. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So, so I guess I'm not understanding the, the hold, the hold feedback or hold off, like if, if the district is continuing the conversation and we get down to more revised list of reasonable restrictions that everybody, you know, can seem to be okay with, and we can present that to the community and vet out the, you know, more final list, then we're just having to get feedback from the community for a few number of items as opposed to, I don't know. I'm not understanding holding off until what?
I think, I'd say I think I partially agree with what Reverend Perry is saying that these negotiations are with members of the community. Correct. So why would we not invite and, you know, feedback from the rest of the community before we continue negotiating with a small portion of the community?
I guess we could, um.
Well, at the end of the day, CCOBH is an umbrella organization that does represent a very large part of the community. Admittedly, you know, Claymont civic groups may not be part of CCOBH. But at the same time, you know, the folks in Claymont have as much a stake in what's going on here as folks who live up, you know, in the CCOBH area. I, I'm perfectly satisfied with coming to an agreement with CCOBH and then presenting a unified front to the community. I don't, I don't see what the problem is with that.
Because I, I think the.
My, my issue is just making sure that there is representation. You're saying that they represent a large portion that's like, I'm unfamiliar with that personally. And so my, my concern is just making sure that we have, that we're fair and that we're equitable in making sure that the representation does represent the entire community. Or none of the community.
But does it meet that if we can take a list of a dozen deed restrictions and instead of getting feedback on that, we can come back to the community with, you know, one or two that we're agreeing to and then I, I just think doing it too early, we're discussing about too many things that aren't even going to, that everybody may agree on that we don't need. So if we're, you know, CCOBH has a dozen deed restrictions and we have zero deed restrictions and we're trying to find which ones are important, I don't see how having a larger discussion sooner helps advance that process. We have a larger conversation with more specific items, I think will get the community.
You know, it's kind of weeding out the ones that are a moot point. So if Del Doc controls ultimately, if a road goes through or not, no need to take that to the broader community.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That's what you're saying.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Ms. Harris, got a roll call?
Mr. Scrobuck?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Pigeon?
Yeah.
Mr. Ackerman?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Reverend Perry, sorry. Mr. Heller?
Yeah.
Dr. Zarek?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Motion carries. That is the end of new business. That is the end of public comments. Before we close, our future meeting dates will be April 19th. Superintendent Holder, we're going to try to target that for back at Mount Pleasant Elementary if we can. Whatever facility requirements need to be done for that. But stay tuned for the actual posting to confirm that, uh, followed by May 3rd and June 21st. Thank you everyone for your time and participation tonight. It was a long one. This concludes our March meeting. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.